Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Just a moment here. I think we're ready to go. I'd like to welcome you to our January 5th, 2021 City Council meeting, consistent with Governor Inslee's Order 20-28.14 dated December 8th, 2020. All public meetings continue to be held remotely. We are following the directions for that order and this meeting is being held remotely. I appreciate everybody's involvement. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics that we have have to in productive meeting. On the agenda are routine and necessary actions for the council to consider. We will provide two opportunities for the public to provide comments. Looking forward to that. City staff physically attending the meeting in the council chambers with me are the same as Katie Allen, City Administrator, IT Technician Todd Henderson, and myself. Our IT Tech Todd Henderson will be the manager of this evening Zoom meeting. I would like to also bring the staff also attending remotely, City Clerk Anne Swenson, Finance Director RJ Stevens, Police Chief Damon Simmons, Patrol Officer Ashley Lamb, Operations and Maintenance Director Jen Camp, PEBs Director Lisa Keys, Library Director Jocelyn Revel, and then Schmidt for City Engineering. Got a full house. I appreciate everybody's being involved on it. As I mentioned earlier, there are two opportunities for public comment. When those times come, I'll acknowledge public participants. There's a three-minute limit during the regular citizen comment period. For the record, please let me know of your name and you are a resident of Liberty Lake. I'd like to take the liberty to mention this now and I'll probably mention it again when we get to public comments. We've checked and we have 25 written comments that we'll be reading into the record. What I'd like to do is to have individuals who are on this Zoom that would like to speak. If you could go to the chat and let us know that yes, you would like to speak. That would give us an idea of how many we will have that would like to speak. And then what we'll do is depending on the number, we can either have them go first or we could start reading some of the comments, go to some of the public speaking, and then get back to it. So we're trying to do it where everything goes smoothly. And once again, finally, anyone who does not speak, it would be muted until the time for them to speak. First item on the agenda is invocation. I would like to request, Dan Dunn, would you honor us to give us a invocation?
Sure thing. Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to come here together to listen and to speak of the place that we call home. I am grateful for the voices that we hear and and those ears with which we will listen. In your son's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'll start the pledge of allegiance if you'll join me.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty.
Justice for all. Thank you. Okay, called or ordered, you know. You know, there's one benefit we've got going here is that this is my first attempt to run the meeting and what the benefit's going to be is is for our ex-mayor Shane because he did such a good job. Now we'll be able to look and say, you know what? He did a great job. Because look at the mistakes that are happening here. So appreciate that. I'd like to have a roll call at this point for council members. Councilmember Kaminsky. Is he muted?
I'm double muted on my phone and the computer. I'm here.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Dunn.
Good evening.
Councilman Severs.
Here.
Councilman Foyer.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Kurtz.
Here.
And Councilman Langford.
Here.
Thank you. We have full attendance. I'd like to also, for the record, say that our attorney is not being able to join us this evening. So we will not have the pleasure of his company. So what I'd like to look at now is that there are some agenda changes that I'll ask Katie to assist me with this. There's several of them. We don't want to make sure we miss anything. Is that one of the items would be is that I would like to move between item after agenda approval and citizen comments that we take item number seven and put after agenda approval. The reason being there is that we know we're going to get into a lot of citizen comments. And we have Officer Swearein that has her family there, and I'm sure they would love to see what Mom's going to get involved with and we can assist them getting that done quicker. So that would be moved to number right after. That would become six. Okay? Also, what I'd like to have put there is that I kind of look at this as comments, reflections on our past mayor. You know, it's happened so quickly that just a week ago today, tonight that he isn't here, we'd like to give the opportunity for any of the council members to reflect back to the last year. The other item, Katie, help me with this correctly if I'm wrong, on number six, mayor selection process.
Correct. And just for purposes of moving things along and keeping similar topics together, we do have a citizen in our community that wanted to speak and his name is Larry Alexander. And then we have the term limits that we've been requested to add to citizen comments. And then finally, we want to take mayor selection process question and following the term limits. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Katie. And also, I know there's a change, a change.
Parks and Arts Commission.
Yes, we have also put it on the Parks and Arts Commission. Lana's going to give us a report and update on that. So that leads me to Councilman Kaminsky. Would you want to make your recommendation that taking consent agenda A and moving that to, I believe, nine would be under the workshop? Is that correct?
Close. So because consent to Agenda A actually says appoint mayor of Liberty Lake, that's not the action we're taking. We're having further discussions on the appointment of it. So yes, I would I would move to remove consent Agenda 10A and add back item nine workshop discussion for further discussion on the appointment process for the mayor's replacement.
Is that recommendation to be put on? Is that recommendation to be put on the workshop?
Yes.
Okay. It's been a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? I hear we done. This passed. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the agenda as as changed.
Excuse me, Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Anne Swenson, City Clerk here. I would request, please, that the council actually take motion to make the previous amendments to the agenda that you requested as far as adding the comments and reflections and including the Parks and Arts Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we we move the agenda to be amended with Parks and Arts Commissioner report as well as reflection comments from council members.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. There's been a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing opposed. We're moving forward. That passed. Very good. Thank you. Now, what I'd like to put at this point, if I may, as I mentioned earlier, you know, just a week ago tonight, we heard for the first time that our mayor for the last year, Shane Brickman, who was also a council member for eight years, had reasons, the health reasons, that is, put him in a position to resign. So some of us have gone through shock. You know, we worked hard in this community with council, working with staff back and forth, and all our volunteers and all our committees and stuff to move forward. So it really is a shock, but I wanted to open it up for council members to give any thoughts to that. I myself was in shock, as many others were. I sat in the audience for many years before making a choice to run for council and I observed the council and I gained a lot of respect for Shane as a council member and certainly admire him since he's taken on the role of mayor. He's been much, much involved. He was a volunteer in the police department 14 years, which in itself was incredible. I appreciate that. He's been able to get us through this last year. So very critical things with a major employee, police chief retiring and bringing on Damon, which I think is a very good choice. So I wanted to say, you know, one thing, great thing is that you're never going to be forgotten. You know, you're one of the troops as far as I'm concerned, and you brought a lot of good things to the council. Thank you. Any other council members would like to say something? Chris, I see your hand go up.
Hey, sorry to interrupt. I want to ask, have we secured the agenda? I don't think I heard a vote on amendment of agenda or it's securing.
Oh, I think you're right. I think, Anne, I think you jumped in at that time.
I did.
So I believe there's a motion on the floor. Chris's motion was with respect to removing 10A, I believe, and inserting nine action regarding the process for the mayor appointment. That's a motion and a second at this moment.
Yes. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sure.
Opposed? Hearing none. Soon it will pass.
Just one last question. Yeah, there is an, is there an executive session in this meeting tonight? It's on the agenda, but I don't see any notes or anything. Just clarify.
No, we do not have an exec, we do not have an executive session tonight.
Okay.
Dan, thanks for catching that. I'm going to remember that you brought that to my attention. Okay? No, that was great. So any other comments from council members? Chris, I thought you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to say it was a true privilege to work alongside Shane for eight years as a council member and, you know, for the year he was our mayor. He has made tremendous strides with regards to the relationship between the staff and the mayor's office, which was incredibly broken in the past. And I think he has stepped them up for success. And I'm totally thrilled that the council voted to add a couple of new positions next year in support of the staff so that we, they can, everybody can do their jobs with the with the tools they have and we can be more productive because everybody's not overloaded. So I want to thank him for his leadership and his and his patience and his vision for the city and all the long hours that he put in and, you know, he's in my prayers every night that his health improves. But we want him to be around a long time. We can't be selfish in wanting to say for mayor if he's going to, he needs some time to be healthy.
Thank you, Chris. Any other reflections from council members? I, Odin? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Shane. Appreciate all the long, hard hours, the work that you've done and wish you the best in whatever endeavors you take on and a big thank you for your leadership.
Hugh, I see your hand up.
Shane, we spent six years together on council. And through that time, I started to look at you not just as a fellow council member, but also as a friend. We ride alongs while you were while you were on the police force and got to spend a lot of great time. I got to learn how much of a mentor and a leader you are and just how passionate you are for our community. As much of a leader as you are, as much of a good head you've got on your shoulders, what I'm thrilled for you right now is that you get to go do what you're best at is to go be dad and go be husband. So man, we are, we're, we're going to miss having you around here. I know, I know we're not ready yet. I know we can't get ready that easy, but we're going to miss having you in an office. So that's a six years on council together, one year, the last seven years has been been great to work alongside you. So thank you.
Thank you. Phil?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to Shane and takes a big man to do what he did for the benefit of his family and himself. And let me tell you, that guy's a big guy. So yeah. Hats off. Thanks.
Okay, very good. Any other like to say anything? Very good. Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. Yes.
What happened?
Chris, you've got your hand up. You're muted.
I hate this double system. I was going to say, I see Shane's on, but I just want to tell him to stop crying because we all know he is.
Well, you could, you could tell Shane that your reputation has preceded you and we are wise to you.
He is very, very honest with his feelings and we fully appreciated it.
Very good. Hearing no other comments on that, if we could move forward. And I'd like to now address, which is here on number seven, which we had moved up, announcements for proclamation, special presentations. The introduction of new Liberty Lake Police Officer Ashton Lamb. And I believe Damon Simmons, that you will do that for us?
Yes, I will.
Very good, Damon. Thank you. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And at this point, I'd like to introduce our newest officer, Ashley Lamb. Ashley, are you with us?
I'm with you, yep.
Awesome. Ashley was born and raised in Aberdeen, Washington. After high school, she attended Evergreen State College where she played on the women's basketball team. In 2012, she moved to Pullman, Washington. Ashley has three children, ages eight, six, and three. Ashley began her criminal justice career as a dispatcher in 2013. In 2014, she became a record specialist with the Pullman Police Department. In 2018, Ashley became a code enforcement officer and in January of 2019, she was hired as a police officer with the Pullman Police Department. Ashley enjoys being part of the community and working with the community that she serves. Ashley chose the police department to be near her family. She also loves the vast amount of outdoor recreation opportunities nearby. Ashley is very excited to work with the community and work within a community focus department. And at this time, Ashley, I need you to raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Ashley Lamb.
I, Ashley Lamb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That as a police officer for the city of Liberty Lake.
That as a police officer for the city of Liberty Lake.
I will faithfully execute the duties and responsibilities.
I will faithfully execute the duties and responsibilities.
In such a manner as to serve and protect.
In such a manner as to serve and protect.
The citizens of Lake.
The citizens of Liberty Lake.
That I will impartially enforce the laws and ordinances.
And I will impartially enforce the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Liberty Lake.
Of the city of Liberty Lake.
County of Spokane.
County of Spokane.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will diligently uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will diligently uphold the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ashley.
Congratulations, Ashley.
Congratulations, Ashley. It's great to have you on board and it's really great to see your family also involved with this. That's outstanding. They'll remember this for a long time. Damon, thank you for doing that. This is the first we've heard from you being the new police chief. So I know we're going to have, hear a lot from you as time goes on, bringing in more police officers. Great to have you on board also.
Thanks, sir.
I have a question now. We're moving on to citizen comments. Todd, do we have some response? How many individuals want to speak? Four. Based on that, if it's the benefits of the council, that we have four and we also have 25 written comments, I would recommend we move forward with the the four individuals who like to speak. I would like to reiterate that we have a three-minute timer and please hold to that because you know, reading 25 into the record is going to take a little bit of a time. So I'm really pleased to have individuals to speak. Todd, who do we have first? DG? DG, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, council members, staff, and Liberty Lake community, and welcome to Chief Simmons and Officer Lamb. I am addressing the workshop topic of what comes next. As Mayor Brickner has resigned and we are all regretful, but we are happy that he has decided that his health is tantamount to what happens the rest of his life. Harles Matthews, Mr. Foyer, Member Foyer, Tim Olson, and Councilmember Langford, among others, have said a few critical things. One, I hear things like five issues, relevance, duty, responsibility, urgency. Selecting the mayor pro tem or a member of the council would be the most prudent way forward. From there, a new member to be selected as the member who will represent the seat of Mayor Protem. It eliminates jockeying for position. It eliminates everything we need to eliminate. Because what is relevant here is that the person who takes that seat does so expeditiously and does so hitting the ground running. The constituents need that. We need to know that the government is going to continue to move for the next 10 months in the still forward motion. As member, Miss Member Langford said, this isn't that complicated. We can do this. It can be swift. It can be done through the council's diligence to select one of their own. If it is the mayor pro tem, we should move forward in that position as he is next in line or someone chosen among the members by the members. And this is a 10-month seat. I encourage all of you to recognize that you are all well-worn stewards of this community. You've done an excellent job serving this community. And there are many citizens outside the council who may want to put in an application to serve with this government as well. But right now, you have a charge and that charge is to move the ball forward swiftly, expeditiously. Nothing more, nothing less. And we as citizens will respect and admire you for having done so in the manner which is consistent with good leadership, stage leadership, and time in office. I appreciate the time allowed to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, DG. Appreciate you coming forward and putting the effort to be involved. Todd, if something else?
Yeah, Sharon Carville.
Sharon? Sharon Carville, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. And my comment is regarding moving forward regarding the next mayor as well. I am Sharon Carville. I have been a resident of Liberty Lake for about 10 years next month. Throughout this time, I have met Councilmember Kaminsky multiple times. And each time she has shown interest in me as a community member, she has shown compassion, friendliness, and respect. She has always taken the time to discuss with me questions and concerns regarding the city. I list everything that Councilmember Kaminsky has accomplished, but this information is easily found in her bio. What stands out to me most as a resident is her passion for developing relationships and her ability to separate her personal opinions from what is best, what is in the best interest of our community. Although honestly, I'm sure they're usually on track with each other. And because of this, I believe this is why she has retained her seat for the last three elections. Additionally, Councilmember Kaminsky is dedicated to being informed. Not only does she continue her education by completing her advanced certificate of municipal leadership, but she has regularly attended our local farmers markets to meet with residents to receive feedback regarding their thoughts about the city. Additionally, her attendance at the farmer's market allows residents to feel more of a connection with the council as they have a friendly face, they know and feel welcome to share their input. Councilmember Kaminsky has always been forthcoming with her goals and priorities for this city. As a resident, I find her approachability, transparency, and open communication very refreshing. It is my opinion that these traits hold great weight in not only being a great council member as she is, but I also feel she would make just a wonderful mayor for this city. What I appreciate is her love for our city and all of its residents. You can see and hear this conveyed through her words and actions as both herself as a community member and a council member. Thank you, Chris, for being on council.
Sharon Carville, thank you. I appreciate those comments. Todd?
We have Christopher Martin.
Christopher Martin?
That would be me.
Christopher? Yes, I see you though. Thank you. Thank you.
I've been a resident here for almost two years here in the next couple of months and I have to say, within the first month or two of me moving here, I met Chris and Shane Brickner as well, and they were instrumental in including us and letting us know what's going on in this community and one of the reasons why we decided to stay and buy a house here. Ever since then, we are easily able to come to them with problems or issues, no matter how minor and or large. They always welcome us and they always take what we have to say seriously. Chris has been one in that respect for the community and keeping us informed on the Facebook page or in person, whether at the farmer's market, everything. I love it. And so I think she would be a good choice, but I also think that we should push this out because not enough community members are aware that you possibly might pick a, someone to replace Mr. Brickner this evening. So I think so the community is more well informed. We want to push it out a week or two to make sure everyone has a say if possible. Thank you.
Thank you for Christopher. I appreciate your comments. Todd, you had a fourth individual?
We actually have two more after that.
Two more. Very good. I see that Tim Olson also requested to speak. Do you have him on the list?
John, yeah.
Good.
John Stoker?
John Stoker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm a Liberty Lake resident. I've been one for the past seven years. Been working in the community at a local establishment called Tier Point in the business profession of engineering side of the company there. And that's where I met City Councilwoman Chris Kaminsky three years ago. I actually had the opportunity to interview her for a position to come aboard at Tier Point. I was very pleased from the get-go on, you know, her critical thinking skills, her rationale, her ability to take in multiple inputs and, you know, really look at a full holistic perspective, weighing the pros and cons of, you know, various decisions and you know, really make the best decision to move forward. I immediately told her boss that, or the hiring manager, that she needed to be hired and the next problem was going to be keeping her hair. So thankfully, she's also involved in supporting our community here and it's been a fantastic, you know, contribution to our community and to our company. And I hope that continues on in both respects for a number of years. She's also someone who I kindly call friend and has been very involved in the community, as we all know, and I've seen personally her involvement in a number of various activities, like was mentioned, the farmer's market, the Winter Glow Festival, a number of other things where she has, you know, really shows well her passion and excitement about this community, which I think is, you know, really is her driving force. So she definitely has my vote from, from a city, you know, resident. And anything else, I'd be happy to answer or provide. I'd be willing to do so. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoker. Appreciate that. Todd?
Absolutely.
Next one is Tim Olson.
Tim Olson. Tim, you're up.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. My name is Tim Olson. I'm a resident of Liberty Lake. I've been here for nearly seven years. My wife and Erin, I live in the beautiful River District here, right next to Mr. Stoker. The city council has been elected by the citizens of Liberty Lake. My message tonight is that you have the responsibility, the opportunity to lead our city. As a citizen, I employ the city council, appoint a city member, a member of this current city council to fill the role of mayor. a member of this current city council to fill the role of mayor until the general election. It's something we discussed in the previous meeting. The city council knows the city staff, the issues we're dealing with, that are the most qualified to lead our city for the next ten or eleven months. I'm asking that you please that tonight. And furthermore, if we have an opportunity to support various candidates, I one-hundred percent support Chris Kaminski for the mayoral appointment for various reasons and a lot that have already been mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks, Tim. Appreciate that. Before we go on, uh, any other wanted to speak? Todd?
Uh, one after the written comments. We have one and one speaker after that.
After that, okay. What I'd like to do now, before we get into twenty-five written comments, is that we also have on here Larry Alexander would like to speak in regards to coronavirus. Like to have, given the opportunity to speak right now. Mr. Alexander, you're up. Are you there, Mr. Alexander? Did you see my line, Todd?
I have his phone number. I'll go call him.
Okay. We're gonna have Katie just go try to reach Mr. Alexander. With that in mind, what I'd like to do now is that also on the list under sitting com- sitting com- citizen comments, excuse me, is term limits. And for some of you recall, in the last several meetings, we've actually talked about the possibility of having term limits for our elected officials. So it was, uh, brought up that, uh, one of our council members asked if we could put this on here to any citizens that would like to make comments pro or con that we look at further of having citizen comments. Now's the time to say it. Do we have anybody who would like to speak on citizen, or on term limits? And everybody rushes the mic, right?
DG would like to speak.
Uh, DG? You're up.
Uh, thank you, council, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and the rest of the council members. Term limits is a very important issue. It's not something to take lightly, and it's certainly not something that's just relegated to a soundbite, a three-minute soundbite for one person, a three-minute soundbite for another. There are many pros and cons to term limits. They speak to the heart of the citizens that the members represent on how the member feels about that representation. It speaks to the issue of how long someone has stayed in a seat that may be there too long. Or if individuals would like to have someone to continue to go on to represent them because their sage representation, bar none, may be superior than others they have had. I would ask as a citizen, as I understand, that citizens are allowed to request that other items go on uh, the agenda, that we put this in a broader spectrum of a workshop where uh, someone mentioned earlier about opening up things so more people could hear it. When we relegate it to three minutes, when we relegate it to just soundbites, what we've done is we've taken away the, the issue. We've taken away the importance of the issue, regardless of what side of the fence someone falls on. Over the years, over the years of this incorporated city, this issue has come up a number of times, and it's had no relevance because it's had no opportunity for the real conversations to happen. Right now, we're dealing with COVID, and we're dealing with finance, and we're dealing with the economy, and now our city is dealing with replacing its mayor. Let's not relegate term limits to soundbites. Let's put it on the agenda and give it a fair process of listening to where many people can come and weigh in on how we would like to be represented by our government, how long we would like them to stay, how long we would like them to serve, and what our next steps would be. I ask that we do this. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, DG. Appreciate the comments. Would anybody else like to speak, uh, to term limits? Uh, hearing that, what we've been able to do is get Mr. Alexander on the phone, so dealing with modern technology in the world, we have a cell phone which we've, Katie has placed next to a microphone, so Mr. Alexander, you have the time?
Yes. Hello. Um, uh, Mayor Shane, uh, many people don't know all the things that you, uh, have done. You've tried to be a wonderful mayor. I didn't, I, you, uh, I didn't know that you were also a, uh, a marriage counselor and a grief counselor. And, uh, I know you're in a tough time with the, uh, virus, and I'm, I'm sorry if a couple of times I've been too critical of you. Uh, I am, am like you that I, I try to help out a lot. And, uh, uh, I, I will write you a letter in a, in a week or two. Um, there are things that I do to relax. And, um, and you've been a, a wonderful person. And, uh, uh, I thank you so much for caring about all of us. Uh, I'll write you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Appreciate you taking the time to be involved in the, the system. So what I'd like to do at this point is that, uh, and call on Ann Swenson to start reading these written comments in, and Ann, I, I hope you're rested and you have some water by, next to you so you can take a swing down and in. So Ann, you're up. Jump in there.
All right, here we go. Uh, the following is a short letter to please read into the record. As a neighbor, parent, and engaged community member in Liberty Lake, I fully support Chris Kaminski to be appointed to fill Shane Brickner's position. Chris is caring, compassionate, considerate, intelligent, well-informed, and always proactive regarding all things Liberty Lake. I've always seen her as someone on Shane's team. They mutually supported each other, and this makes me feel this would be a seamless and cordial transition. Chris has done a lot for the city and would be a wonderful solution to this new challenge. Thank you. Summer Fields, Darryl. Next citizen comment is, I would like to throw my support to Chris Kaminski to become the next mayor of Liberty Lake, Washington. Chris brings with her years of experience, dedication, and the same philosophies as those of Shane Brickner. I'm asking the city council to please toss their votes for the next mayor of Liberty Lake, Washington, Chris Kaminski. Thank you for your consideration. Mark Saba, Liberty Lake resident. The next comment was Holly Woodruff, Liberty Lake resident commenting on the mayoral appointment workshop prior to the January fifth city council meeting. Um, I hope city council will appoint Councilmember Chris Kaminski as the mayor of Liberty Lake, filling the current vacancy for that position. I know Councilmember Kaminski brings the experience and knowledge needed to perform the duties of the mayor. She is very involved in the community and it's clear how much she cares about Liberty Lake. Councilmember Kaminski has been and continues to be a fixture at community events and at the farmer's market, talking with and answering questions from her constituents. She's worked to increase her knowledge of government functions through continuing education. Councilmember Kaminski has the energy and personality to be effective as mayor and advocate for our city. I wish I could be there in person or even through Zoom to offer my support. I look forward to hearing that Councilmember Kaminski has become our new mayor. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Sincerely, Holly Woodruff. Next comment, please consider Chris Kaminski to fill a position of mayor for the remainder of Shane Brickner's term. My wife Tracy and I have known Chris for many years and appreciate her ability to be reached for any civic reason. Seeing her at the weekly farmer's market during the summer and at nearly every city event is what we need from our government leaders. Chris understands this and her moderate position on policies are also appreciated. Both my wife Tracy and I heartily endorse her. Jeff Means. I would like to have the following read into the record at the council meeting regarding the appointment for Chris Kaminski as mayor. Chris has been an incredible asset to this community. Along with Shane, she spends almost every Saturday at the farmer's market making herself available to the city residents to answer questions or just shoot the breeze. She also cares very deeply about this community and is a big supporter of Shane and shares many of the same visions of the direction our little city is and should be heading. With that, I would hope the council appoints Chris to be our next mayor. Thank you. Jared Von Tobal. To City Clerk Ann Swenson, hello, my name is Karen Pegelaro. I've lived in Liberty Lake since nineteen ninety-six. I've been involved in different community projects in that time as a volunteer. During this time, I met Chris Kaminski. She seemed to always be at many of the events where I was a volunteer. I went up and introduced myself to her. When I first moved to Liberty Lake, we were not a city, and I had moved over from Tacoma with my family. I noticed we didn't have any police presence at that time. I began doing research downtown Spokane, and eventually I became the first president of Spokane, Liberty Lake. I am very sorry to share of our mayor Shane Brickner's health issues, and because of this, he made the wise decision to resign his position as mayor. I also supported and voted for Shane Brickner to become the mayor. In his short time, he proved himself to be a great leader who won the respect of this community. I want to recommend Chris Kaminski as current city council member to fill the mayor's seat. I'm not sure how this process works, but as a longtime resident and a person who has seen Chris in action, I wanted to speak my mind and recommend Chris. She has all the qualities a good mayor should have: integrity, communication, and empathy. These are the qualities that made Shane such a great mayor. He was accessible to all the citizens. Chris is the same. Look at the city page or community page. Chris is always right there to answer or direct people to answer their questions. Chris is also known in this community. She has been hands-on in active in community functions, and that's how I met her. Also, she possesses the management ability to move others from point A to point B. She can provide the proper direction. She has a vision for our city's future, as I have seen her speak at many council meetings. I believe she will be able to tackle issues that affect our community. These are trying times. The pandemic has been going on for months. I feel it is very essential to appoint someone who's familiar with the issues our city is and will be facing. I have seen her in action. I know she is good at delegating and has the respect of many of the city's citizens. It is my opinion that Chris Kaminski is the best suited to take over the mayor's position. Shane Brickner was an excellent mayor. He inspired people. Chris is the same. I have often volunteered with her myself. In the same vein, I am confident Chris, as mayor, will also be able to make decisions that may not be popular with everyone, but make the best decisions for our city. Being a mayor is a difficult job. I believe this Kaminski has the business savvy, administrative, and communication skills to do the job moving forward. I believe she is the right person to step in as the mayor. Best regards, Karen Pegelaro. Next comment, I am writing to submit my support for Chris Kaminski as the mayor of Liberty Lake. While on the community page a few years ago, I saw a post from Chris Kaminski addressing a question from a fellow citizen. I decided to take it upon myself to message her with the concern I had. That very night, she took it upon herself to personally meet up with me. Chris worked with the city and constantly gave me updates about the concern. While I know the majority of the city and the city council played a part in getting the concern addressed, I will always remember how amazing it felt to be a citizen, voice my concern to a council member and having that concern addressed. I did not know Chris until this event. She is one of the many reasons I love where I live and she feel, and I feel she would be an amazing oh, candidate to fill the mayoral role. Thank you for your time, Michelle Johnson. Neighbor, staff, and elected official. I am a nine-year resident of Liberty Lake and live in the River District. I have been on the civil service, planning and parks, and art missions, and have attended nearly every meeting of the city council. During that time, I have gotten to know you all personally and have watched how you interact, make decisions, and work to conserve our community. The resignation of our mayor was sudden and unexpected, leading to the question of, quote, "Who is the best person to lead our city in the same direction that our citizens overwhelmingly voted for?" end quote. It's my opinion that the person with the most proven experience, best qualifications, and who has exemplified a true servant leader is Chris Kaminski. She has earned the Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership, Association of Washington Cities, and has served as our mayor pro tem from two thousand fourteen through two thousand sixteen. Chris has constantly shown strong support for public safety, balanced residential and business growth, fiscal responsibility, and open, transparent communication with our residents. She has been involved in collaborative efforts with the Spokane County Commissioners, City of Spokane Valley, Central Valley School District, Spokane Valley Fire Department, Liberty Lake Water and Sewer District, Transportation Improvement Board, and a variety of other volunteer organizations. I highly recommend Chris Kaminski to you for strong consideration as the next mayor of Liberty Lake. With appreciation for all you do and for how important this decision is for all of us, Tom Salver. Liberty Lake, Washington City Councilor whomever else it may concern. It is my understanding that Chris Kaminski is under consideration for the vacant mayoral seat in Liberty Lake. As a colleague and direct supervisor of Chris at her place of employment, SharePoint LLC, I would like to submit my enthusiastic recommendation for Chris's appointment as mayor of Liberty Lake, Washington. I have worked directly with Chris in September two thousand seventeen when she joined our team as the most remotely located member. As such, I needed someone dedicated and loyal, intelligent and flexible. Chris fulfilled all the criteria. Most importantly, Chris has shown three characteristics which I believe support my recommendation. Number one, collaborative. I very quickly promoted Chris to team lead over our Western Support Function due to her unique ability to pragmatically address complex scenarios where complexity exists in process, but also human relationships. Chris has an ability to fairly navigate these scenarios to mutually beneficial conclusion, whether internally at SharePoint or with one of our customers. Two, sacrifice for the greater good. Chris has been willing to take on or assist with many of these complex scenarios when it may have been detrimental for her daily or weekly schedule. She exhibits a servant leadership quality that bodes extremely well for the broad constituency of a mayoral office. Three, integrity. Another of Chris's strengths, as she will not be swayed by shortcuts to success. Examples in the corporate world are a belief that solutions should be found on a path that brings benefit to all and does not cut corners at the expense of any spot of the organization. As exhibited by my experience with Chris, I enthusiastically support her appointment and believe her characteristics make her a fantastic asset for the city of Liberty Lake. I am sure you have seen these same characteristics in working with Chris, but I felt compelled to send you my endorsement. I will happily make myself available for further communication if helpful. Best regards, Alan Sheffield, Director, Sales Support, SharePoint LLC. Next comment, I understand that the city council will be appointing a new mayor tonight. And though I cannot attend, I would like to request that this be read into the minutes to support Chris Kaminski. Thank you. If you have any questions, please call me. Uh, I support the appointment of Chris Kaminski to the mayor of Position of Liberty Lake. Though I have only known Chris personally for a few short years, I have been exposed to her as it relates to the politics of Liberty Lake for well over ten years. It is my opinion that Chris has proven herself to be intelligent, hardworking, ethical, and trustworthy. She has always gone the extra mile to help the residents of Liberty Lake get answers to questions and provide much-needed information. As sad as I am that Mayor Brickner had to step down, I think that Chris Kaminski will be able to fill the mayoral role and keep Liberty Lake moving in a positive direction. Best regards, Miles E. Crawford.
Best regards, Miles E. Crawford.
I want to start by saying thank you to Shane Brickner for a year of service as mayor that included a water district contamination issue, followed by COVID. Through all of the trials of the year, I believe Shane did a fantastic job in moving Liberty Lake forward and working with the city staff to the benefit of the city. I am writing to ask the city council to appoint Kristin as our new mayor. I believe Chris has not only the qualifications and experience for the job, but the enthusiasm, heart, and passion for the job. Chris is a go-getter. She is always putting herself out there for the residents, whether it be an answer on social media or fighting for a small business to thrive in our community. Chris has worked to develop and build positive relationships with the community, city staff, as well as the schools, fire departments, and neighboring communities. Please appoint Chris as mayor and let's keep Liberty Lake moving forward. Shelley Dickinson.
I'd like to voice my support for Chris as mayor. Her time on the city council, countless hours devoted to the community of Liberty Lake, and life for the city would make her a great mayor. Please read this into the record. Thank you, Joe Rogers.
To whom it may concern, I have been a resident of Liberty Lake for over a decade now and I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. I am now also two years into being on the board of directors for the Meadowwood Homeowners Association as my way of giving back to my neighbors for being part of such a great community. I have had the fortune to meet some incredible people that are engaged to make the town they live in a better and safer place. One that has stood out as a great asset to our town is Chris. She has privately engaged me to discuss areas of collaboration with the HOA with great interest in ensuring all stakeholders in Liberty Lake have input and also provide reciprocal support. Chris has an open ear to anyone with ideas to enrich the safety and utility of our town. Although filling the shoes of our past mayors is a tough goal, I am confident that Chris has the passion and basic drive to represent our whole community in this capacity. I can think of no one more suited for being the face of our town in these tough times. Thank you for hearing my voice in this matter, and I am fully in support of Kristin to be our next mayor. Best regards, Jacob Anderson.
Liberty Lake City Council. I was deeply saddened by the recent resignation of Mayor Shane Brickner. I was very impressed with the work he has done this past year. It is important to me to have a mayor that is engaged, informed, and connected to the community. Keeping that in mind, would strongly support the appointment of council member Chris for the next mayor of Liberty Lake. I have known council member for a number of years now. I initially met her when I was the executive director of Spokane County Regional Animal Protection Service, SCRAP. She was a new council member at the time and was interested in learning more about the services that SCRAP provided to the community. I was impressed with her level of engagement and concern for Liberty Lake and its citizens. I retired from SCRAP in two thousand eighteen, but have been a resident of Liberty Lake for over ten years now. I have personally observed council member engagement with the community. I have talked with her at the city's farmer market booth about city issues. Additionally, I have followed her posts on social media involving the city. She regularly shares important information and answers questions. If she does not know the answer, then she will research it and get the answers for you. It is evident that she deeply cares about the citizens of Liberty Lake. I appreciate her concern for public safety, balanced growth, and fiscal responsibility. She was open and transparent, critical qualities for any government official. This last year has been a new beginning in Liberty Lake. The leadership of Mayor Brickner and the changes he brought to the city have been positive and greatly appreciated. I believe that council member is perfect to continue this work. I urge you to select council member as the next mayor of City of Liberty Lake. Thank you, Nancy Hill.
I support council member Chris as the next mayor of Liberty Lake. I met council member at the city booth at the Liberty Lake Farmers Market. I had several questions about the city's transportation plan. I found her to be informative and helpful. I also have seen her communications on social media, sharing important updates about the city. I was sorry to hear about the resignation of Mayor Shane Brickner for health reasons. He has done an excellent job this year. I appreciate how much more open the communication has been between the city, government, and its citizens. I believe that council member has the skills to carry his work forward and keep the city on a positive path. I know that council member is a strong supporter of public safety, which is also important to me. Please elect council member as the next mayor of Liberty Lake. Respectfully, R.C. Lavash.
Ms. Swenson, I want to officially record my support for Chris Stella from there. From my observation, she has been a dedicated council member, community volunteer, and her experience in this role would be an asset to Liberty Lake. Michelle Grabicki.
I am writing to voice my support for Chris as a city news to fill the position recently vacated by Shane Brickner. I first became the queen of Chris as she represented the city at the locals' farmer market. I found her to always be approachable, knowledgeable, and committed to furthering the needs of our city. Subsequently, during the two thousand nineteen campaign, I had the opportunity to listen to her present her ideals at a forum which led me to support her reelection. One of my favorite quotes by G. Eliot, "What do we live for if not to make life less difficult for each other?" I feel Chris has demonstrated this principle in her personal and professional life. In addition to being a devoted family member with a demanding career, she has made the time to volunteer with an organization that meets the needs of the homeless in our community. I have lived in the Liberty Lake community since two thousand twelve, and I am proud to call it my home, primarily the result of how the city maintains it. Chris's tenure on the city council proves beneficial to continuing the progress that is being made here. I feel her leadership style and commitment to the betterment of this community is most valuable. In closing, please accept my endorsement of Chris for the position of mayor. Thank you for your consideration, Barbara Hatfield.
Hello, Anne. I would like to provide my professional and personal recommendation of Chris to serve as mayor of City of Liberty Lake, Washington. Chris served as a program manager under my direction, working closely together at Unicep Packaging LLC, as well as volunteer efforts led by Chris for Liberty Lake, Washington. Chris exhibits high levels of productivity and extensive communication skills while consistently maintaining high standards for quality and accuracy in her work. She is consistently concise and thoughtful, taking initiative to become involved, even in sensitive issues and situations to get resolution. As important as her professional qualifications and accomplishments, Chris's personality and demeanor fit well in a leadership role. Chris is reliable, dedicated, and extremely upbeat. Her ability to interact with coworkers as well as customers is unparalleled as she performs a high volume of work while creating excellent rapport with coworkers, customers, and other business partners. Her education, previous experience as pro tem mayor for Liberty Lake, depth of experience, and leadership skills makes Chris very qualified to lead your city. Please feel free to contact me to discuss Chris's qualifications for this position. Craig Wirth, Strategic Account Manager, UPS.
I support Chris to be our next mayor. She has an outstanding record of service and leadership to Liberty Lake. Thank you, June Jacobson.
Please consider Chris to be Liberty Lake interim mayor. In my opinion, she shares the values of our community and would be a strong leader who would carry us through until our next scheduled election. Thank you, Rick Jacobson.
I am writing in support of Chris to be appointed acting mayor in place of Shane Brickner. Chris has been a longtime contributor to the city of Liberty Lake. She has been a faithful council member and a zealous advocate for the city and its affairs even before taking office. As a former council member, I had the privilege of working with Chris. Her genuine care for the community and its citizens shines through in all that she does. I am especially grateful for her moderate voice in favor of common sense solutions to tough problems. She weighs out each circumstance on its merits and looks for the best ways to promote the common good. I wholeheartedly am in support of her moving into this position. I trust that she would be good for the city and be a positive force in our community. Sincerely, Ryan Romney.
Council members, tonight you are being asked to vote on who should be the next mayor. I realized just a few days ago, this vote was unimaginable, but here you are trying to make a choice that possibly is the most important vote you've taken as council member. The vote of mayor should be in the hands of voters, as electing our leaders is fundamental to our democracy. However, sometimes the direct vote of the public is delayed, as it is in this situation. Tonight, I would encourage you to think about the choice before you and do your best to reflect the heart and soul of the community.
I have great admiration of both nominees for mayor. However, I ask that you support Chris to be our next mayor. Chris has more knowledge and heart for the community than anyone I know. Chris has worked tirelessly connecting the city to the community on social media, educating the community at farmers markets, and elevating the quality of the debates at council meetings. There is no doubt in my mind Chris will provide the necessary stability and continuity of knowledge the city will most certainly need in two thousand twenty-one. Chris has proven her abilities as a skilled council member, leader to the staff, and her dedication to the community is without question. During my tenure on the council, I learned from Chris the necessary compassion and willingness to compromise for the good of the community. Chris is not interested in being right, but rather doing what's right. I strongly encourage the council to reflect on your encounters with Chris to be reminded on just how sincere and genuine of a person she is. Chris will serve as a mayor with honor and dignity. She has always done on council. Thank you for your consideration. Best regards, John Rocket, former council member.
We urge you to consider Chris as our interim mayor. Her vast experience and dedication to Liberty Lake make her the perfect candidate to step in and fill the vacancy. She will continue to move our city forward in a responsible manner. Thank you, Erin and Jason Marisill.
Letter of Recommendation Mayoral Appointment. Ms. Swenson, I have had the pleasure of working with Chris for the past two and a half years. During that time, Chris has been a model employee and a productive contributor to our organization. In addition to having a high degree of integrity and matureful personality, she is one of those rare individuals who both works independently and takes initiative as appropriately. She is strong in time management work ethic and demonstrates competence beyond the skills for which she was originally hired. Chris has taken on a leadership role with her peers and collaborates well with everyone that she engages. Chris has a strong academic background, having graduated from Miami University with a BA and completing her MBA at the University of Tampa. She is well spoken and approaches challenges with thought and care. She speaks often of her community efforts and takes great joy in volunteering and supporting her local community. I believe Chris would make an excellent choice for the mayoral appointment and will work tirelessly to build and support the goals and priorities of council. Seldom have I been able to make such an enthusiastic recommendation regarding an employee, colleague, and friend. I have no hesitation in advising you to appoint Chris to the position of mayor. Sincerely, Sean McCarthy, Senior Vice President, Business Operations, SharePoint.
And the final comment that I have received. Hi, Anne. I hope this email finds you well. I'm reaching out to express my absolute admiration and respect. I lost my comment, sorry. I'm reaching out to express my absolute admiration and respect for Chris and hopes to further develop into her position as mayoral appointee. I have known Chris for three and a half years and the capacity she made seems to cheer them. Quite frankly, she is literally one of my most favorite human beings on the planet. It's very rare in today's landscape to come across the quality of person that I have found in Chris. One of the things that we all know about Chris here at SharePoint is the love of her community. I hope to share good news with Chris later today. Happy New Year, Boyd Goodfellow. And there for ten, that concludes the written report. Written comment.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Anne. I appreciate that. And I really would like to thank everybody who's participated, not only being on the call and speaking here, but also taking the time and effort to write the letters to the council. I'm sure there's not a council member that certainly would look and appreciate the efforts you've put forward. But then, thank you. Now, Todd, was there someone else? Very good. Well, here's a familiar name, Shane Brickner.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We hear you.
Great to see all of you. First and foremost, congratulations, Ashley, on your appointment as a new police officer with a great city. I know you're gonna do amazing things. And again, congratulations to Chief Asmus. I've heard amazing things that you've been doing already. For Chief Simmons, you bring a lot to the police department, and I'm grateful for that. For the council, I really cannot thank you enough for all your efforts. I know you guys are gonna make a great decision for the betterment of the community. And looking at the totality of this decision, I know it's not an easy one. And I appreciate Councilmember and Mayor's willingness to step into this role. You know, with this year, it has been a tough year in relation to COVID. And it takes an entire team and somebody to lead that team well. Our community's future, our social and economic vitality, depends on all of us working together and hearing each other in the most effective way possible. And really making sure that everybody that is involved, from citizens to city council, the staff alike, are supported. This decision, I know, is tough. You have two individuals that have been serving this community for a long time. I, when I, when we started looking at the response to COVID and the message of Liberty Lake Together, it embodies all of us, working together and collaborating and listening. I really have gotten a good feel for the staff, the council, and the citizens alike. And I think that this is success. And I think that this success is really driven by everybody working together in that collaboration. With that being said, I hear all the comments that are being made tonight, and I support those comments. I think that it takes an individual that's going to fill this seat that is well balanced, that is not only available to do the work, but to hear the people and hear the staff and entrust what information is being brought forward. I think Chris is very well balanced with that, and I think that she would do a phenomenal job. And I support her greatly in her efforts to sit in on this role. The staff are an amazing group of people. And I think this is an excellent opportunity for the city council to work with the staff cohesively and really get engaged. It's not just one person that makes us successful. It's everybody really working together. And that's kind of where that thought process of Liberty Lake Together came from. The staff do an amazing job, and they're very effective at what they do. And entrusting them to do their job and do it effectively is vital for the community. And it's vital for the future of our success. And I know that Chris really listens to the staff and what they're doing and treats everybody equally with respect. I think it's, you guys are going to make the right choice. I trust that. And I think that with the position we're in, to have two individuals that are willing to step forward to help in this situation is excellent. And I agree with a lot of the comments that the council have made, that you guys have the ability from within to continue to lead this city down the right path. You guys have all been elected for a reason, and you guys all bring great contributions. Having sat on the council seat, the mayor pro temp seat, and the mayor seat, I see how vital it is that this individual can work very closely with all bodies and represent all bodies and hear them all closely and make sure that those are all supported on all three sides. I think that's imperative. So with that, I really appreciate your guys' guidance and decision-making for this situation. But for, there's been a lot of comments made about a smooth transition with this and getting somebody into this role that knows the players and can continue to lead this city in a challenging time. You know, it's not going away anytime soon. So I believe wholeheartedly that that can be done from somebody from within in the council and can make it very seamless. So I really thank you guys for everything. I love working with all you guys. I will continue to be around. I feel like a pin doll being tested, poked, and prodded. And we're on the right path to get things through. I've been on medications, and I just, I want everyone to know how much I appreciate all your support. And my family really greatly appreciates it as well.
Thanks, Shane. Good to hear from you. And I think that you read off all of there. I believe there's, no one else would like to speak? The sound there. Once again, I appreciate everybody's willingness to get involved in the process. Thank you. Really do appreciate that. Next on the agenda, which leads kind of into this, is that under the citizen comments was mayor selection process. So that's an item there. What I would like to request is if you've already written in or if you've already spoken in reference to the process, that please don't be redundant on your comments. I encourage individuals, if you want to speak on this, please do so. Once again, it's on mayor selection process. Some of you are around six o'clock.
Is there any city, is there a city administrator report or city council meeting, city council reports? Item number eight on the agenda.
That comes after this, Dan.
Okay.
That was an add-on that we put on this particular one. And once we're through with that, then we'll go to item number eight. Thank you for asking that. Is there any citizen would like to speak to the selection process we're looking at? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to move forward to item number eight, reports. City council, any city council reports? Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Very good. I don't see the, don't see the hands. Very good. Would you like to go on to city administrator?
Excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem, Phil Foye raised his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Phil. I didn't see on the screen. Yes, please go ahead and speak, Phil.
Thank you. Really quick, just a little shout out to myself. I started my AWC classes while I've been homesick, and I have seven credits. Thank you.
Well, Councilman Foye, thank you for taking the time to bring that to our attention. We appreciate that. Would you like to go into it? City administrator report, Katie, please let you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Member of the council, good evening and happy twenty twenty-one. Very optimistic that this is gonna be a good year. I wanted to start out with a tracking list that I have of items that you've identified for future workshops. When I put the list together to share with you, I didn't know that we would have such a long meeting to discuss a mayoral appointment. But I wanted to let you know what's on our tracking sheet of items that we really need some feedback from you on. And what is the order that you want to address these topics on? So let me read them very quickly. Term limits, financial investment policy, Robert's rules of order, role clarity, review city council rules of procedure, line scooters, trailhead, and libraries. So I was gonna ask you to give me some feedback, but tonight is not the night. So I will bring this list back. If you want to add to it, we can do that. I'm a list maker. I can't walk into a grocery store without a list. So I'm gonna keep this list. But eventually, I'm gonna be asking you guys to help us prioritize the order of us bringing back these topics at a workshop. So moving along also, there's council opportunities to be identified as a designated representative city. And I wanted to name three opportunities. One is the hotel motel tax designation. Typically, the mayor has felt that role. When Mayor Brickner was here, he wanted to offer that opportunity to another council person. I don't think we need a decision tonight, but we will eventually want the council to identify a person to represent the city on that panel. STA designee is on your agenda for next council meeting. My understanding is that Mayor Pro Tem Kennedy is interested in continuing on in the STA designee and that Councilmember Kaminski is willing to be a backup. So having said that, that will show up on the agenda. If any of you would like to be considered also, please let us know. And then finally, SRTC, we need a designate for that. I don't have a timeline, but eventually we will want to identify someone to sit in on. It stands for Spokane Regional Transportation Commission. They meet once a month on Thursday, Thursday right after the lunch hour. So on that, I'm gonna move forward, but I just wanted to put that on your radar. City Hall or City Operations, there's some things I wanted to share with you. One is City Hall continues to be closed. We're open by appointment only. And rather than trying to figure this out day by day, week by week, based on numbers, based on the information that we get from other jurisdictions, we just think that we need to stay closed through February first, twenty twenty-one. And so that could change. We're flexibility is a key factor in how we have to behave these days. But right now, we just think that we're gonna keep City Hall closed through February first. That's a Monday. And it would be extended if needed. Most employees are working remotely. At City Hall, the only ones that are here are the ones that cannot work remotely. And I have to tell you, it isn't a lot of extra effort to work remotely. Because all these appointments, phone calls, emails, texting, all that stuff is still happening with the services that we provide. And it is very, our employees are very, very busy with permits, engineering, right-of-way, a whole lot of inspections. There's just a lot of activities that are still going on even though City Hall is closed. So outside City Hall, between the library, police department, field operations, and I should add also trailhead, our staff are working, we're taking extra safety precautions. And the other thing I wanted to let you know is our police officers, along with the other police officers in Spokane County, have been offered the vaccine. So the vaccine is available to our police department. And they can, I think they can go out to their way and get immunized if they so choose. So that is currently being offered. As the vaccines roll out, we're gonna get more and more information. I was on a call this morning. I'm not gonna spend tonight to go through it. But we are staying very current on the vaccine schedule and the prioritization. One thing I do want to mention is that the Health District is really looking at and focusing in on a Spokane County approach to opening education and school districts. Each school district might open at a different time, just depending on their layout of their classrooms, the steps that they have to take to incorporate some of the requirements, but they're all operating under the same plan. So every school district doesn't have its own plan. They all have the same plan. But their opening sequence may be different, just depending on their own logistics. And then finally, I wanted to mention, we have selected an HR manager. Her name is Heidi Workman. She starts January nineteenth, and we will introduce her to you at that council meeting on the nineteenth. That will be her very first day. Jen Camp is gonna give us an update on Winter Glow.
Yeah, so I think we all know that Winter Glow was very popular again this year and a little famous in our small town. I think that COVID actually made it a little more popular this year because they were able to push everything to the outer proximity of the park and make it a drive-through as well as a walk-through, and it sort of consolidated all of the light fixtures. And we received a lot of compliments about how much better that was. So hopefully in years going forward, if we can do this again, they'll continue and build on what they did this year. I think it was more organized and more visual this year than in past years. And thank you to all the volunteers. It was amazing. Couldn't do it without the volunteers, hundreds of volunteers. Again, it's just not something that could be pulled off with city staff. Gotta have those volunteers to jump in and help out. So thank you so much. And it was a great event. Hope to have it again in future years. Chris?
Thank you, Jen. On COVID, I wanted to let all of you know that the city did spend, and this might be redundant, we did spend three hundred and five of CARES Act dollars that was received. And I see Councilmember Kaminski has her hand up.
Yeah, sorry, Katie. I just wanted to add on to what Jen was saying about Winter Glow. I found a new page on Facebook this year, well, new to me at least. It was called Spokane Christmas Lights. And the word is out all around Spokane, Spokane County about our little display. It was well received. People were saying it was better than Riverfront Park and Manitowoc Park. And they were thrilled to be able to not have any traffic to deal with, the fact that they could get out and walk around if they wanted to. And during our teardown meeting, Rich had mentioned that there's still some items that we still haven't used. So I would encourage the Winter Glow team to consider getting everything out next year because I think it's gonna be even more popular. So great job to the teams. Thanks for everybody's help.
Yeah, this was only year two, and I went over there a couple times, and sometimes it was hard to even find a place to park. So yeah, it was very, very popular. So Ben, I was gonna move on, since we're talking about River Crossing or River District, where Winter Glow was located. I just want to mention that Lisa brought to my attention that January twenty-seventh, there's a public hearing on River Crossing twenty twenty. This development has two hundred and seventy lots or three hundred and seventy housing units. It's a very good-sized project. And so I'm just putting that on your radar. Once it goes through the public hearing process, it'll eventually come back to the city council for your consideration in approving that plan. And then before I go on to Kramer Road, which is the old Henry Road adjacent to the Public Works Yard, I did want to put on your radar the Fourth of July this year. Jen brought to my attention that we do have to update our contract with the fireworks provider. If the council wants us to have fireworks again. What is different with FOPP, going in a different direction and dissolving, we as a city need to decide what role we want to play, if any, on the music and the other activities that went on that were sponsored by FOPP. So I'm not asking you to make a decision tonight. I'm just putting it on your radar. These events don't just happen. There's a lot of preparation that has to take place. And we're just not at this point in time ready to tackle something like that. And quite frankly, we don't know the restrictions that COVID is gonna be placing on us either. So I'm just, again, putting it on your radar. And then finally, I'm gonna turn over to Ben Schmidt. We've had some circumstances in the field that he's gonna share with you.
Thank you, Katie. So unfortunately, last weekend, we had some issues with the frost and water and rain for the subgrade of Kramer Road and had some of the roadway fail on the eastbound lane along there. And so what our plan is, is to do some spot repairs with cold patch. And then once we get some better weather in the spring, actually cut it out and do full asphalt repairs and look at potentially adjusting the Kramer Road overlay project in the capital facilities plan maybe a little bit sooner than twenty twenty-four. So we'll look into that and see what repairs we can do in conjunction with the Public Works Yard and the Henry Road project.
Yeah, so we always like council to be aware of, I believe we have weight restrictions on the road as well to try to get as much out of it before we can go and finally do a springtime repair. Is that correct? Are those weight restrictions in place now?
They are in place right now. There's some local construction traffic that will be able to use the road for those legacy frontage improvements along there. But yes, the weight restrictions are in place, and then typically the county has weight restrictions as well. So it's a, it's a pretty typical thing for that roadway this time of year.
Thank you, Ben. Mayor Pro Tem, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate that. Ben, thanks for your comments also on it. Next on the agenda, we have Parks and Art Commission. Lena, I believe that you're there. You got the floor.
Thanks, guys. Lena Schutz, Chairperson of the Parks and Arts Commission. We welcomed three new commissioners yesterday at our first meeting of twenty twenty-one, so that's exciting. We have one project that we are beginning work on that we want to get some feedback from council on. I'll go over it briefly with you, and then if you guys have feedback, that would be great. Or if you'd rather us present it at a different time due to time constraints, we can do that as well. We are calling the project the Liberty Lake Community Statue Project. It would be a multi-year project in highly visible, interactive locations around Liberty Lake. So think our parks, the library, trailhead, things where, places where people could go take photo opportunities, kind of like utility box. But the utility box project obviously is not very pedestrian friendly, whereas this project would be. When we first were coming up with an idea, we were thinking about COVID and kind of what what we wanted to do as a Parks and Arts Commission to leave a little bit of history of what's been going on in our community, but also maybe a legacy going forward. And we loved the Liberty Lake Together campaign and thought it would be a great idea to kind of um, and thought it would be a great idea to kind of play off of the momentum of that. Um, and hopefully all of you guys are familiar with the logo of the Together campaign. There's like the little person with his, his or her arms in the air. Um, that's kind of what we wanted to play off of. And so the call to artists would be, um, to, for an artist to embody that person logo. Um, and it would be up to the artist what medium and installation, but that it would be identifiable, that it would be, um, kind of playing off of that. Um, think Spokane Hearts Campaign, or if you guys are familiar with Virginia Love Works Campaign. But it'd be a way for our community to, um, display art about us, you know, things that make us Liberty Lake. So think at the library, you know, they could be, it could be a themed piece about, um, you know, that ties into the library, um, or just in general, something that, that kind of speaks to Liberty Lake. Um, and so that's kind of the essence of the project. We are thinking of putting a call to artists out, um, and have it run through March, um, with a selection after that, and then a summer installation. Um, the commission would love to do two locations and two statues, but obviously it would depend on price of the pieces and our budget. Um, but we would love, if you guys have questions or comments, or if you'd like us to do a formal presentation, we'd be happy to do that.
Uh, yes, Hugh.
Lena, what a, what a neat project. Um, this sure is great having you guys to, to put these ideas out there. Am I, am I understanding correctly, are you talking about a single installation of a statue, or are you talking about multiple installations all around the community? I mean, lo, long-term vision?
I think our long-term vision is to have them installed all over the city and, and lots of different locations. And it's kind of something our community could look forward to every year. Um, and they could all be different and wonderful. Um, so that's kind of our vision for it. Um, of course, to start, we would probably start with one and, and, you know, make sure it's in line with, you know, what everybody, um, was thinking, obviously. But, um, I think the vision is for it to absolutely be multi-year. And it could change throughout the years. What Liberty Lake is right now may not be what we want to portray five years from now. And that's kind of the beauty of a project like this. Um, it could kind of involve with us over time. Um, and obviously there's sponsorship opportunities with a project like this, even business, uh, you know, sponsor opportunities, um, which is always great for us as a commission. We always try to do that whenever possible, and I think this is a great project for that.
I, I love all the ideas and thoughts, very neat. And, um, your question about a presentation, uh, frankly, I would love a presentation, um, partly just out of my interest for the project, it sounds very neat. I, I don't know, um, and maybe other council members have more feedback. I don't know if a presentation sooner is better, or if it's better to do the, um, call to artists and, and, and know more about, you know, location and, and have some conceptual, um, ideas drawn up or something. So, I love, I love to hear more about it, um, as we get closer and as you know more about, uh, budgetary pieces and things like that, that we can potentially help out with, so, thank you.
Any other council, uh, comments or questions? Uh, Chris?
Yeah, um, no, I agree with you wholeheartedly, um, great idea. You have loved spreading it out around the city and over the years. And like you say, you know, to the, to the part where you acknowledge that, you know, that what we want today, what we are today, might not be what we are, you know, five years from now. So I'm looking forward to seeing more on this as well, thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Annie, I believe you had your hand up.
I just wanted to echo what, um, Chris and Hugh have said, that I love the idea. Um, and if there was any way to, um, as far as community input, to, um, in, maybe involve some of our students in possible selection of that, I think it would get some real nice, um, engagement and motivation for them to go out and show their parents maybe some of the stuff that they voted for. I, I remember doing that as a kid about the state animal, and I don't know. Uh, it was just something that I was thinking of, and I know you're still engaged with the school and everything. So that was something I wanted to throw out.
Yeah.
Any other council? I'd like to add to that, Lena, I, I, great idea, I, I, I'm excited about something moving in that direction. I would like to see a somewhat formal presentation from this, from the ground level moving it, because this looks like something that will stretch out over a period of years as we develop and put them out there. I think it's great to look at a formal presentation. That way, as it moves forward, uh, council members will be aware of what we talked about in the past. So, yeah, I'm excited about that, great idea.
Okay, what I think might be great then, from hearing from council members, is maybe if we go ahead and get a call to artists out, just so that we can maybe get some ideas coming in that we can share along with the project. I think that might be better to visualize. It's kind of hard now to visualize exactly what we're talking about. So maybe it would be a good idea to go ahead and publish the call to artists, and then, um, kind of share with you guys as we get some, some coming in.
I agree. Any other comments or questions? Uh, seeing them, Lena, thanks for, uh, for hanging in there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Very good, we finished your reports, now we go into workshop. And keep in mind that, uh, at the consent agenda, we took off, A, to go for a discussion of mayor, mayor for the city of Liberty Lake, and we put that into the workshop. So council, where would you like to go? You're up. Todd, if you could change my screen so I see everybody.
Phil has his hand up.
Uh, Phil has his hand up at the end room, go ahead, Phil.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Everybody can hear me? Perfect, thank you. So at this time then, based on our discussion from our workshop meeting at six o'clock hour, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the mayor from the current city council members only.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion? Uh, Dan, yes?
Um, in reflection on the need for a, uh, city council member appointment, um, I just, I guess I, I repeat maybe what I heard Hugh say earlier, which is, um, what's the downside? What is the true, I'd say, uh, harm and wrongdoing in, uh, allowing a council member to nominate a, uh, community member? I'll ask that to, um, directly, uh, council members.
Is there a response there back to Dan asking that question? I see Hugh, you got your hand up first, I believe, and then, uh, Phil.
I was gonna, I was gonna voice the same opinion, uh, I, um, I'm not in understanding why we want, why we want to force it to be limited only to council. Uh, all that does is, to me, is it restricts opportunities. Um, ultimately, it'd still be a council member that would appoint another person, uh, that's not on council. But again, I just don't see a downside to allowing it to be more than just the council.
Uh, Phil, you have your hand up, and then Annie?
Yep, thank you. I guess I go back to, all seven members of the council are, have been elected previously. So to have a rep, if I wasn't on the council as a citizen, to have a mayor that represents me, I would, whether I voted for them or not, in my mind, should be a previously elected office holder. That's my only reasoning. Um, I, I think it just eliminates, um, if we pick somebody other than somebody from the city council, they were never elected by the citizens. The seven of us, at some point or one time or another, were all elected by the citizens. Whether everybody voted for us or not is irrelevant. Um, but I think that's just the way the electoral process should work. And like what was brought up at the citizen comments, we're going to have an election in 10 months, and another one in two years after that. So they'll get, citizens have plenty of opportunities to win.
Uh, thanks, Phil. Annie, you had your hand up, you're next.
Uh, yeah, I guess my question is, and I, I'm not looking for, for, for names here, but of those council members who are in favor of nominating someone potentially from the community, my first question is, do you have somebody in mind? And two, are they somebody that's willing to serve? And why I'm asking?
I don't know who might. Dan?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Dan, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I'm, no, I'm very grateful for the clarification. Um, I think with respect to that, Annie, and the purpose of names, uh, one of the first observations that council member Seifson had in our six o'clock hour was that, in fact, it's been three days and a holiday weekend for, um, this to mature over time in our community. And to be really clear, I think that, um, that's a little bit insufficient for somebody to, um, I'd say really resolve what might be all the implications of stepping forward for this. I think that in this time, it's really important that you get out and you engage with people who are, I'd say, potentially considering in this action. But yeah, two days and a holiday weekend doesn't do much, uh, to allow that to, um, really mature. So that's how I'd answer that.
Any other council member, uh, like to chime in?
Hugh has his hand up.
Hugh?
And Chris.
And then Chris.
Annie, to, to answer your question, uh, I, I'm just going to stuck out the way Dan put it, that we haven't had enough time. Um, I, I have had some conversations out there. I don't have anybody in mind that, that could fill the role you're talking about. Um, but I just, I would hate for, for us to squash an opportunity that could come up. Um, well, Dan, we've had two days to go do this, essentially. Um, yeah, we've probably killed some weekend time over it too, but the community has just heard about it, who knows, um, what comes out. I just don't see any downside to, um, you know, Phil, I hea, I hear you loud and clear that there's seven of us that could easily take over. I do not disagree with that in any way, we're all elected. Um, but there could be potential community members out there, uh, that could step in just as easily as any of us. Um, you know, we, we haven't put it out there, and then ultimately it'd be up to us to vote for them. If I, if I steal, um, Dan's comment from, uh, from our six o'clock workshop, like cousin Vinnie, you guys aren't going to vote for that person, and, uh, and that'd be very, very fair. Um, I have a feeling nominations will wind up being council members mostly. I just think that, that's off the opportunity, if some, an opportunity presented itself outside of our group.
Thanks, Hugh. Uh, Chris?
Yeah, um, I was just going to, um, jump on board with Phil here. You know, we have seven very qualified candidates. Um, they've already been selected from the greater community. Um, not to mention the fact that, uh, again, to Phil's point, we ha, we will have an election in November, and that process starts in May. Um, so that, that is plenty of time for people in the community to consider the opportunity and put their hat in the ring for, for an election in November.
Would any other council members like to say something in addition to what you've said before? If not, we have a motion, a second discussion, call for the vote. This would be by hand, I believe, correct? Yes, Chris?
Yeah, if, if you could just, just for the record, restate the motion since we've had some discussions, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, so we'd like to restate the, uh...
Ready?
Restate the motion?
Yeah, that, uh, my motion was to...
Make sure, make sure Ann has it properly.
Yeah. Uh, my motion was to appoint the mayor from the current city council members only.
Thank you.
Simple?
Simple.
Therefore, I'd like to show, show, show of hands, all those in favor.
I guess I, I have one ash, uh, one last clarification. Appointment is a very distinct reference to the actions. I think we're talking about nominating somebody to a following vote. Is that part of this motion?
No.
Clarification, Phil, what's your intentions?
I thought we were talking about the process, and the process is, at the end of this, we are going to appoint somebody from the city council.
But not necessarily tonight.
But not tonight, I'm just saying, this is the process, we're going, we're going to appoint somebody from the current city council.
Got it. Okay, that's clear, thanks.
Thanks.
Clearing everybody's mind? Therefore, I'll ask again for the vote, everybody in favor of the motions, raise your hand, if you're yes. I count one, two, three, four, five in favor, uh, those opposed.
I...
Two, very good, thanks. I see, uh, two, I just raised my hand and there was two. Uh, so it passes five to two. Um, next on the agenda, any other discussion beyond that?
Mayor Proton, can I ask a question?
Yes, please, Katie has a question.
Um, it would be helpful, uh, if we knew when. So when do you want this to come back onto the agenda?
Okay, Phil, you have your hand up, is that in reference to what Katie just said? When?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the candidates that are interested's resume by January 12th at 5:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Annie, you have your hand up?
Uh, question, uh...
Yes, I do, I have a few questions, yeah. Uh, so what does it mean to accept their resumes? And then I have a question about what actual things we want to accept. Um, so Phil, can you answer the, clarify the first question, and then I have a comment about what we would accept?
As far as who we would accept a resume from, I would say it could be all seven of us if you wanted to, but I'm not putting my name in. Uh, so I, I don't, I didn't want to limit it to just one or two, or, I mean, I di, I didn't want to put a number on who could apply, or who could put a application in. Whoever has interest can put in, put interest in. I mean, that seems fair.
So I have a... Uh, I'd like to amend the motion. Um, and motion that, um, during this meeting, anybody who's interested from city council, make themselves known, so we know who we're talking about.
Uh, Chris, you raise your hand?
Uh, just answering Annie's question.
Oh, okay, I think I need a second, but yes.
Second.
Uh, let's, let's back up on procedure here. We don't have our attorney here. You've made a motion to amend that, but then what you're asking for is for us to identify at this point anybody who's interested in running?
I, I'm asking, I guess my motion to amend is to amend the timeline for, um, making your, for making yourself, self-nominee, I guess, um, to tonight.
It can, I, I'm just looking to address the process. So can we make that a separate motion?
I think that's a good idea, that's the appropriate action, I think, and we can take Annie's after.
Annie, I think you need to remove your motion then.
Me?
I guess, I guess it wasn't seconded, so...
Uh, of course.
You don't need to remove it. Okay.
Yeah.
I think Annie needs her own motion.
Yeah, if you rescind it...
Yeah, because it wasn't seconded and it died.
Mayor Proton, if I could offer?
Yes, Katie, Katie wants to offer.
If I can offer some party, so the motion that was made by House Member Foyer is that interested city council members would submit a resume and a vision statement, uh, by 5:00 PM to our city clerk by January 12th, that's one week from today. Then Annie, if you wanted to make another motion, you could do it. But I would first, uh, vote on the motion that's on the floor. And then Annie, if you want to request that council members that are interested in doing that, identify themselves tonight, and that's a question for the council to weigh in on.
And I don't think that necessarily needs a motion also.
I guess, maybe you guys didn't tell me what motion to make or which motion to rescind, but, um, I think one of the things that I heard clearly tonight in the comments and in our discussion in the workshop, in the comments from the citizens, is let's not let this, um, play out for a terribly long time. I believe we made the decision that someone from the council is going to be, um, it's, it's one of the seven. Um, I don't know that we need a week's time to identify those candidates. And I think my other question is, is a resume really going to be something that we're going to look at? I don't want to have, I don't want to have anybody go through putting their resume together and putting together a vision statement if that's not something that we want to get from them. So those are my, I guess, procedural questions for discussion.
I have a comment there, I, I, I share the same thing, is that, quite honestly, we all know... I have a comment there. I I I share the same thing. Is it, quite honestly, we all know where everybody's resume is. Maybe we may not not know is clarification to what your vision is. So I think to go through handing out, putting together resumes is is anti-productive at this point. Maybe nice reading, but anti-productive. And if anything, what is your vision? And with that come along is that interviews, for me, interviews will come along of the candidates, whoever they are, is that what do they want? Why are they running? Those are things we can address, I think, at that time. Uh, Annie, you brought your hand up?
Well, and and I guess one of the things that I'm interested in is actually just hearing from the candidates. I don't, I don't know for me that it's worth um. I I think for me, it'd be better for me to hear from the candidates in a five to ten, five minute, 10 minute presentation at our next meeting about why they want to be here, what they want to do, um, see a little bit of their public speaking styles. How are they gonna be as a leader of the city? That's what I'm interested in. Um, and it may be different from what everybody else is interested in reviewing to nominate or to pick somebody from this group.
So Hugh, you have your hand up?
Yes, sir. Um, yeah, yeah. So given um I'm I'm pulling a 180 on on what I've already said tonight. Um, given that we've now limited it to council only, I don't know why we don't vote tonight. I don't, I honestly, I don't need resumes. I don't need vision statements. Um, I don't need to know how you guys are public speakers. We do this every couple of weeks. I don't, I don't have any good rationale why we wouldn't move to vote tonight. And we're talking Mike and Chris, for instance, right? Nobody has been nominated at this point, but right now we know there's strong interest from Mike and Chris. They they voted, they've voiced that already. I uh, a vision statement isn't gonna probably change my opinion. If you really think it would, then um, then great. Um, so there is a motion on the table um that will need to be um. I I'm trying to decide if uh, I think that would need to be voted on and then I then um I could bring another motion uh right afterwards. I think procedurally.
I think you are talking about another motion, which I think I I think we have to deal with.
After this, so.
Motion we have going down.
So I will say, so for the sake of this motion, um, if this motion hold, I would um, I moved to amend the motion to have resumes. Hey, if it, if it goes to vote, it goes to vote. Um, I amend this motion to have resumes and vision statement due by the 11th at 5:00 P. M. So we've got 24 hours to review.
Second.
Odin, you have your hand up?
I do, sir.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, look. Annie, you need to rescind your your motion. Once that's done. I'm giving her the benefit of a council member to rescind it on her own. Okay?
Very good.
And then we'll continue with the vote on Foyer's motion. After that's completed, we'll entertain anybody else's motion on anything they want to bring up. But can we please get through one motion at a time? And make some forward progress. Okay? Thank you.
I rescind my motion.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
That's process.
Now.
Okay.
We're back to Phil.
We're back to you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, take the vote.
Well, we're back. What, could you repeat? Could you repeat what the vote is gonna be, Phil? Cause I know you talked about a resume and a vision statement.
Yeah, I thought there was some interest from the workshop to have a uh, whatever you want to call it, a resume, an interview, have some something supplied by the candidates before we find, made a final decision on the 19th. That's the only reason why I brought that motion up, but the motion was um to accept a candidate's resume by January 12th at 5:00 P. M. All I was trying to do is put a timeline on it so we could take another motion and take a decision at the 19th of January.
Does everybody understand the motion?
I uh moved to amend the motion to, I moved to amend the motion to um uh, move up the timeline to January 11th at 5:00 P. M.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Phil. Discussion?
I guess, uh, what's the, how, what's that gonna help us?
How is that different than what I just did?
Yeah.
There's no.
It's 24 hours to review resumes and vision statements. If there are people turning these things in, I don't want it one hour before our council meeting.
The next council meeting is not till the 19th.
We, we haven't discussed when we may bring a vote.
So that was my next, that was my con, my idea or about the thought behind all this was give us a, give the candidates a week to provide something for us to look at. Give the council a week to look it over and make a decision on the 19th.
So let's call for a second.
So, yeah, we need to vote on you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, that doesn't necessarily, excuse me, that doesn't necessarily mean you gotta go to a vote just because you called a question. The question is further discussion. So uh, we have a a motion and a second for an amendment. Let's vote on that first. Does the, does the amendment pass? So call a vote on the amendment.
Vote on the amendment. If everybody understands, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
What?
Nay. Sorry. Nay.
Okay. So.
Back to the original amendment that I made.
Correct. Let's take a vote on that, please.
For the city clerk, was there an outcome of that vote up or down?
And you, you have what the results of that was? I saw that there was two in favor. Two in favor and the remainder was was a no.
Good.
So I have um councilmember receivers and councilmember Dunn voted
An affirmative.
to support the motion and the remaining five councilmembers voted to oppose the motion.
Right.
The amendment.
Now, do you want to vote on Phil's at this point?
That would be the process.
Right. So all those in favor indicate, indicate? Say again?
So that would be the process.
Chris, go ahead.
So that that we, yeah, the process would be to to vote on that, but again, we need to get given the habit of re- restating the motion right before the vote.
Right. I'll restate it one more time. My motion was to accept a candidate's resume or presentation by January 12th at 5:00 P. M.
All those in favor of the motion? Okay, if I say the aye, aye or yes?
Yes.
Now, who has said yes? Please, please raise your hand. We have Odin, we have Phil. And we have no one else. Those opposed, please indicate by raising your hand. We have four, five. Sales? Two to five. Further discussion? Hugh, your turn.
I moved to uh go into the nomination process and voting process uh for the appointment of our new mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move into the voting process to elect a mayor. Discussion. Hugh?
I nominate Chris Kamenskis.
Thank you.
Well, where's the discussion?
Yeah, we have to vote on it. We're gonna do it.
Yeah, we, we have to have a, there's a, there's a motion to change it to have an election tonight. So that's the motion that's been seconded. So now there's a discussion on that. Is there any discussion? Of bringing it to a vote tonight? If no one's gonna jump into it, then I will. I'm not in favor that we do that. For the simple reason is that, you know, we have seven individuals and we all know each other. But this is the, this is a position for mayor. We know what our responsibilities and what our job is, and we also assume what we know what the mayor is. But it comes down to, the criteria wasn't really set, but common sense is, who wants the position? We've established that. Who has the time for the position and who's qualified for the position? I think it's very premature if we suddenly jump into a vote tonight when we have had no discussion or what Annie brought up, the, the, to have the right for somebody who's interested to be able to say, hey, here's why I'm interested in that. Cause what is the job? What is entailed in that? And do we have the time to do that? It's more critical than if we have the expertise. Time is, time is the biggest issue that we have here. That's my comment. Yes, Chris?
I was just gonna say, I I would hope that any of us interested would be able to answer those questions tonight without needing a week or two to prepare.
That's certainly up to the discretion of the council. The majority goes for that. I'm 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 on the bandwagon. Yes, Hugh?
Given that there's only seven of us, we've all discussed that um in theory, we are the most um uh experienced people in the city. Um, yeah, as a body, we are the elected body. Um, I would also hope that we've all got the ability to um speak up for ourselves, and I'm saying that a little bit facetiously. Um, if somebody's appointed, they don't feel they have the time and don't want to accept it. They don't have to ex, I'm sorry, nominated. Um, they don't have to accept the nomination either. So um, I just go back to, we've all worked together for a while. I don't, I don't need a week to um pontificate between uh, between those. Um, that's me. I'm, I'm, I'm one of seven, so um. Uh, yeah, I, that's what I meant.
Other council comments? So the motion is to change it to have, put in play tonight to have the election? That would be the motion and that has been seconded. Is that correct?
You restate the motion.
Say again?
Is that exactly what the motion was?
Hugh?
The the motion was to move into the nomination and appointment, nomination vote and appointment process uh of our new mayor tonight.
Thank you.
Dan, I believe you seconded that?
Yep.
Further discussion? Hearing that, let's put it to a vote. Those in favor of moving into the process of nomination and voting tonight, indicate a yes, raise your hand. We have one, two, three, four, four, five in favor and two not. So it passes five to two. So then at this point, we would go to Annie, I'm thinking back where you had said, you know, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Hugh.
Um, are we in the process now? Can I make a nomination?
Yes, you may.
I nominate Chris Kamenskis. Sorry, councilmember Chris Kamenskis.
Thank you.
Very good.
Zero second?
Dan, a seconding?
No, I'm good. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm here to nominate Mike Kennedy.
Good. Through a second?
Second.
Okay, Annie seconded. Any other individuals?
Point of order.
Yes.
I apologize. I don't remember. Um, Annie, uh, you seconded. Chris, can Annie also second? Dan? Yes.
Yeah.
I just, yeah, sorry.
Uh, thank you for asking for that clarification, Hugh. I think it was a good question. Any other, any other individuals want to jump in the middle of this? Okay, if not, I would throw out, I would throw out is that we want to, what I I keep going back to what Annie had said is to have the opportunity for the individuals running for this to make some comments. Chris, you have a comment towards that?
On mute. Oh, hit that red button again. Sorry. Um, I do that too. Um, so I, I anticipate that, you know, some people may look back at January of last year when um I was nominated for Mayor Portem and I declined the nomination at that time. I knew, of course, this was all pre-COVID. Things actually got more crazy than I expected, but I knew last year that I had a crazy year coming. I had a son graduating from high school, the same son starting college, and at that point, no idea where or how far away he would be. I knew I'd be traveling across country to move my cousin across the country. You know, I thought I would be taking time off, you know, to go see my son play bar球 tennis. That obviously didn't happen. But in addition to all that, what turned out is I moved my cousin twice. I sold my parents' townhouse and I got them moved too. My other concern last year was the fact that I was taking on some additional job responsibilities. After a year of doing that, my responsibilities have shifted, but it has been no additional time. Um, as you heard during with with some of the things that were read into the record, um, we had one person um speak in person um during citizens comments, who is a senior vice president of our company, um, showing company and personal support. Um, I also had my boss and his boss um who are fully supportive of me um taking on this endeavor. Um, they're very, my work schedule is very flexible. You all know I work in Lily Lake as well. Um, and they are willing to stand by me and, you know, allow me the time necessary to be successful at this. And um, you know, in the past, you know, people have asked me, you know, why don't you run for mayor? Well, you know, really, A, it really wasn't the right time in my life. I'm now an empty nester. I have the time. I have the flexibility and, you know, I would I would um commit to running um in November for for the rest of the term.
Go for the clause nine.
Is that Tom or John in there? Anyway, um, so, you know, I just want to rest, uh, put everybody's mind at ease with regards to the time commitment and it kind of go back and explain why I had declined that nomination and how things have changed over the year. Um, you know, with regards to, you know, my desire um to to be on on the council, um, you know, I just, you know, I'm a couple of days shy of 11 years on the council. I developed an extremely good relationship with the staff. But as shown in my, in my professional life, I also know how to be fair and firm to get things done. Um, you know, I, it it would be our job, both as a council and and it would be my job as mayor to, you know, provide both the council and the staff, you know, and we're already doing that, you know, m- more opportunities to educate themselves, you know, mentorships, whatever it might take to allow them to be successful in their jobs and to grow. You know, if they're not growing, they're standing still and dying. So um, we have a commitment to them. We have a commitment to the, to the community um to keep moving forward and, you know, um, we made a great profit this year as a council. Uh, I said earlier, you know, so proud that we added the two positions that we did. Um, I know people have been overloaded over the last many years and that means mistakes, not intentional, but I I've been there. I've been in that situation where, you know, I've been doing the work of three people and mistakes get made. I think we're in a position going forward that we we are rectifying that that situation. I'm really proud of that.
Any other comments, Chris?
No, I think, I think that's it. And plus, people have questions that you think you need to answer.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Well, then, then allow, allow me to address also is that uh, I'm glad you bring up about time because time is the most critical to me when it comes to what our job is and what we're able to do. The the other thing is qualifications, you know, we, we could have individuals who are qualified and really want something, but if they don't have the time, that's, that's the issue on it. And time is the thing that we're, we have to address. As council members, each year, we turn into uh, and uh, um, we we turn into, for the state, how many hours we anticipate that we're gonna be doing weekly. And that's pretty much anywhere between eight to 10 hours, I think, most individuals have put in there. What's interesting about the mayor is that it's, that if you think about the pay of the mayor is three times more than what the council is. The reason why that is, is because what's expected of the mayor is substantially more than what's expected of us as council members. So what it comes down to is that what are the ti, what's the timeframe? So what it comes down to is that what are the ti, what's the timeframe? And the timeframe, to me, has always been that everything that happens for the count, for the city, happens between eight, five, or nine to six. All the functions outside of the city, when it comes to GSI, STA, transportation, Spokane Valley Chamber, being involved in any of these organizations or training has to do during the time of the day when they meet. I myself look back and then one thing I've done since I've been a council member is I keep a calendar that every meeting I attend, every single function I go to, I put it on the calendar. So at the end of the year, I can look and say, okay, here's what I got accomplished that year. When I look back on the amount of city council members and special meetings we've had, we've had 29 of which all of us has had a pretty good record of attending. I've never missed a, a function. In three years, I've never missed a function. I've never missed a meeting. I feel that I've come prepared for that. But also what I've taken on is that I'm in a unique situation because I've been self-employed for a long period of time and I've had many companies, a lot of coworkers that I've worked with. And I'm of the age group now is that I have more time and the work schedule I still have, like I said to Katie the other day, a lot of my work starts before five in the, in the morning and after eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night where I'm dealing back east, things of the sort here. So it's allowed me to give that time during the days. In the last week, the last month, a year or so, being involved with the STA, Spokane Valley Chamber, which I'm on, on those, uh, board of directors or the committees, I've attended many, many functions. Uh, AWC, the same thing. Now, all of us can say that we've attended 24 meetings or five additional meetings. In my particular case, when I look at, when it comes to Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce, uh, GSI, STA, all of these functions of which I go to, and I'm a board member on majority of those, represent the city. What that accounts to, keep in mind, minus city meetings, I have a little over 78 meetings that I've attended in 2000 alone. Now, what I don't keep track of is if I have to stop at city hall and visit with somebody or whatever the case may be. I don't keep track of that. I only keep track of the things where it's particularly involved with the city. The most important for me is to realize time. Because one, all, every single of those meetings have one thing in common. They happen during the day. They don't happen after hours. And that's a critical thing that is there. Our mayor that left, he had a full-time job and he was working unbelievable, putting in the hours and it took its toll. And that we have to, to realize is, is very, very critical. When we have meetings here at city hall, if somebody's coming in and they want to talk to the mayor about something and they're looking at businesses or things of that sort here, they want to meet here. And we have to, we have to adjust our schedules to what they have. Now, some individuals may have looked in the past and say, well, it's not that critical that we belong to GSI or we go to Spokane Valley Chamber and things of the sort here. I'm here to tell you it's critical for the success of our citizens. Because I believe we have fiduciary responsibilities to be involved as much as we can. Now, if I've got a job, I'm working eight to five or nine to six. I can't go to all that. But I'll use Chris for an example, that she's been able to go to a lot of functions outside of that over the years, which is commendable. Absolutely commendable. But also what happens is that when you're face of this, this city, not only if you're a mayor, but you're a council member, when you're going to a Spokane Valley Chamber, they have 400 and some odd members. You know what they all have in common? They're all business owners. So when I'm at these functions and I'm handing out business cards, I'm a representative of Liberty Lake and I'm saying to them, what's your business? Really? Have you ever thought about expanding? Would you like to come to Liberty Lake? We're a 10th fastest growing city in the state and we have a lot of area that there's growth. We have developers that are interested in putting buildings in and they're looking for people who could fill those buildings. That's the connection. That a council member and critical the mayor is what their job is. So the qualifications is one thing, the desire is another, but time is the most critical. Now, most you know, I've been self-employed the majority of my life, have had many businesses. At one point, we had close, over 100 employees. Now Betty and I have a pact going after being married as long as we had. If she thinks I'm never going to get to that many employees again, just shoot me. Put me out of my misery. But the benefit is this, how we gained that success is not because of Mike Kennedy. I was not the expertise there. I was the guy that went out and found the talent that would work and get the, the, the dream goal or desire that the rest of the team had and how we could make that successful. Because that is my success was not dependent so much on me, Mike Kennedy. It was dependent on the people that I could bring around me. The ones that I can motivate to say, instead, instead of saying, hey, I want you to do this because it benefits me. My goal has always been, what do you want? When I had a lot of coworkers versus, I don't like the term employees, I used to go to them and say, what do you want? What can I do to help you make your job better? Because when I helped that individual become successful, guess what? Betty and I became successful. The difference is then, is that if it wasn't successful, they may go out and get another job if the business failed. You know what happened? Betty and Mike, we'd lose our home. Why? Because we gambled everything. So I want to finish up is that there's one, is a person qualified? And I think a lot of people are very qualified in many ways. Two, do we have the desire? We both do. Three, the most critical thing, do we have the time?
Yes.
That's where I feel that I bring the, the table. Because I proved over the last couple of years, especially this year, when I've had over close to 80 functions I've been to and not counting, that I have never, ever missed a meeting. And just to throw in, as most you know, in this last year, I've had eye surgery twice. I've had two knees replaced and a hernia operation. And during all of that, I never missed a meeting. Thank you. Yeah, yes, Chris?
All right, well, Hugh had his hand up first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to speak, uh, for my nomination. So when I'm looking at this interim mayor position and, uh, for both of you, I'm sorry, I've got an interim mayor, but it is a short period of time here that we're talking about. I'll tell you that, that number one, uh, number one, uh, concern in my mind is, uh, is for our city staff. Under Katie's leadership and what Shane brought to the table, um, and, and really, I hate saying Shane and Katie even because it's the hard work of, of some really dedicated people on staff. Um, they are rising up and we're seeing real leaders, uh, uh, being fostered in our city. When I started on council seven years ago, I didn't feel as strongly as I do today about that. I'm not saying we didn't have great people then. We've got better people now and some of those same people are still aboard and they're really turning into true leaders. Um, and, uh, that's a, that's kind of a, a nod to Shane and Katie, um, over the last year because, uh, I've got this feeling that that's really ramped up, um, in this space. My, one of my biggest concerns right now is they're losing one of their leaders and, um, and we've got to replace somebody temporarily for eight or nine or 10 months and then a new mayor is going to come in. And we don't know who the new mayor is going to be, uh, when it's elected at the end of the year. And leadership turnover, uh, to me is an issue, um, when, when you've got people are just starting to get to that, that, that kind of crux of their, um, their leadership careers, for the staff. I look at Chris as somebody who, when I talk to staff members, talk to community members, talk to, um, department heads, they seem to respect Chris immensely and, and I think that'd be a very cohesive, um, uh, just easy, um, transformation right through there if Chris came into office. Um, and that to me was number one. Mike, I know you're extremely passionate about the city. Um, I could say great things about both of you guys. Um, but I, but when I look at, um, Chris's community engagement, whether she's on Facebook posts or talking to citizens, uh, the, how many, uh, letters did Ann read tonight? Um, the fact that her employer is present and has already spoken, uh, in favor of her doing this and, um, it sounds to me like would be willing to offer additional flexibility. You know, she's maybe already got enough. I'm not worried about the time for Chris. I'll also speak highly that we've got Katie aboard. Katie is a wonderful leader and ultimately, um, we just need somebody to come alongside of Katie, um, and, and see, see out the rest of the year there. So I, I look at it and think, um, uh, I've never heard a negative word from Chris about Katie or Katie about Chris. Um, Mike, that's not to say I haven't heard anything about you. I'm just saying, I know that they've got a good relationship and I think that that, that, uh, that Chris moving into this spot would, uh, would just be a smooth transition to get us through what's already, um, a tough time. We still are, you know, we still have frustrations out there. Um, I, I think this is a very natural, smooth transition. I also would be remiss if I didn't, um, I'm seeing a comment pop up. Tier point affords Chris great flexibility and stands behind her endeavor for taking this role. That's from John Stoker. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, Chris is, is potentially putting a heck of a sacrifice out there, um, by her desire to do this. Uh, Chris, you've got, uh, three more years in your seat right now?
Yep.
She's potentially cutting herself off at the end of this year. It's not to say she can't run and, and be elected for mayor or something along those lines, but, um, that's a, that's a sacrifice when you've got the passion she's got for being on council. So anyways, I, I strongly support Chris. I think she did a wonderful job, uh, in the interim for us here. Um, and, and appreciate her, her willingness to do this.
Dan, you nominated me. Do you want to throw anything in or I, I will?
You're on mute, Dan.
Mute, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Dan.
No doubt. Uh, hand more, more hand gestures, everybody. Um, no, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be a man of few words, but I just want to recognize that, you know, Mike, you're great, you're a great qualified candidate for this role and you've expressed interest and I just want to make sure that a nomination is immediately available. So that's where I'm at.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? Chris?
Yeah, if, if I just might add, I know, Mike, you and I have talked about this many times over the last three years, that even going back before you were on council, you know, how many hours both you and I put in? Um, you know, I don't keep as meticulous notes as you do. I don't see it to be necessary to be able to tally it up and, you know, and tell people, but you know, I, I average, you know, all right, well, 2020 aside, obviously, it's been a little bit different this year with COVID and a father almost dying and whatnot, um, things happen. But you know, I, I, you and I will both average a more than, you know, 70, 80, 100 hours a month, you know, o- over the years. Um, and that was even when I didn't have the support of my, my employer. Um, as, as John, who is, I say he's a Liberty Lake resident, but one of our senior VPs, um, just kind of popped up in the comments. You know, I've got the full support of my employer to, to have the flexibility. Um, we all work, well, I work in the office just because I want to work in the office. Everybody knows I, I walk there. Everybody's working from home. Everybody's got flexibility. And my boss and his boss, again, another SVP who re, re, reports directly to our CEO, have the confidence that I can, can do votes and they, you know, and I have the flexibility to do my job from wherever I need to be and have flexible hours. So really, time, time is not an issue. And, you know, I, I do think going forward, what I would like to see from the council is more participation in going to those meetings, spreading some of the responsibilities out. Not to say I would not be going to those meetings, but, you know, I don't, I don't like the fact that all the, the, you know, the, the meeting attendance falls on just a couple of people and for, you know, for the most part, Mike, it's been you and I, you know, and, and, you know, we, we see, you know, Dan at, at quite a few, but it seems like you and I are the regular attendees at these things. I would love to see the council get more engaged, time permitting. Uh, obviously, everybody's different, um, to spread some of that out. Not only for, um, visibility for Liberty Lake, but for, um, everybody's education. You, we learn a lot of each of these events that we attend and I would strongly encourage that.
Okay, good. Uh, having given you the opportunity to say that, I, I feel like I have the opportunity to follow up also. Uh, yeah, it, for me, when I keep track of this stuff, the reason why I do that is because it's a thing I call time management. Time management is critical. Uh, it's critical for our staff, for our employees, for Katie, for everybody. That one thing we only get, all of us get one thing in common. It's 24 hours a day. A lot of people feel, you know, they're, they're born in and they're born into that, but the one thing we're born equally on is every one of us is, God's given us 24 hours a day. Now, we can either invest that time or we can spend it. Either way, it's going away. For me, I always had the ability that I can build a business and I can make money. I can always make money. You know what I can't make is more time. What I can do is help other individuals though to make money and that's through building and encouraging people to be able to do their job and give them the tools so they can become successful. We've got a great staff here and we're going to be continuing on to grow. We've lost some key people. We're going to lose key people as time goes on. There's no question about that. You know, we need leadership now as, as good as we've had in the past to continue to bring people together and get them back into this building. We, we need to be in the position where we're built, working with directly these builders and individuals who are going to come to Liberty Lake and give us what we need. Because the shocking thing that's going to hit all of us is this, right now, we're very flush financially. We are so envious of so many cities or envious of us, that a build out, there's a lot of money that stops coming into the city. So we need that leadership now, not to, that another individual wouldn't have that, to be able to have the time quickly to respond to these things. So time management is a big thing. And I think when it comes down to the mayor, the mayor to me is more critical of time management than it comes to council members. The reason being is this, as a council member, I had six really good backup people. If I can't make it, maybe somebody else can. But there's one thing you could always depend on me. If you couldn't make it to the meeting, if you called me, guess what? I never said no. I could rearrange my schedule easily because I didn't have to ask my employer to allow me to do that on it. So those are the things that I think both of us bring to the table. There's not a clinker in this group. Okay? Some are more involved now than they've been in the past, but you know next year what will happen? We've got people now who are very involved. The next year, because of things change, it won't be as involved. And those people will be able to reach up and say, you know what? I now have time like Chris is saying. That's a benefit we've got going here. So with that in mind, any other comments? Want to call a vote? I'm sorry.
Question.
Question. Phil Foyer, do you have a question?
Uh, not a question. Just a comment. My decision is not based on, um, it's not a personal decision. My decision is based on, uh, running the city for the benefit of the citizens, plain and simple. It's not a, to me, it's not a popularity contest. You're both very well qualified. I like both of you equally well. Um, so that's not part of the, it comes, it comes down to, um, uh, operation of the city and who can do that. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, before we go, Chris, did you have a comment? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
You got a question? I apologize. Go ahead.
You and I do not like.
Yeah, you gotta work, you gotta work on your beard a little bit more, Chris. Question's probably more for Katie. Katie, do you mind, um, going over the voting procedure before we go to a vote? Since Sean's not here.
I was going to address that. I, I was going to address that, but go ahead, Katie.
You know, there's different ways to approach it. Um, with Zoom, it's not typical. So I have a suggestion and I'll share with you what the suggestion is. My suggestion is that we call for the vote and that first let's assume that Chris and Mike are the two advocates, the two candidates that you're going to consider. Um, we would ask that you send an email to Ann within a certain amount of time, like 60 minutes, 60 seconds, and then let Ann come back and report the vote. The reason why I say that is if you, Owen doesn't like this idea, let me tell you why. Um, I, I worked with Mayor Gonzalez and I'll tell you, he did this. Um, actually, he did it by a piece of paper. Everyone turned into a piece of paper with a tally. And then he read, council member so-and-so voted for candidate A and council member so-and-so voted for candidate B. And the first one they got, four, four votes prevailed. The reason is because it's, it's very awkward to see people raising their hands and looking over and see what the other guy is doing. So that is why it's not a secret ballot because you're all sending your, your vote to our city. not a secret ballot, because you're all sending your, your vote to our city clerk, and then she's going to report back on what it is. So that's a suggestion. If you don't like that idea, then we'll just call, I think you just call for the vote, and it'll be by a show of the hands. Um, the downside is there's kind of this little bit of manipulation sometimes on raising hands when you're looking at your neighbor. So that's a suggestion. Councilmember Severs, um, and I hope I explained why the benefit is doing it that way. It could be very quick.
When Katie and I discussed this the other day, with that suggestion, first, the other thing comes up is that how we've done it in the past. So when we looked at Mayor Protem and things in the past, we just do a raise of hands.
So you can do either.
Yeah. So, so we can do either. I think what's important to realize is it's the council's decision which direction you want to go. That's what's important to establish, one or the other. Uh, Hugh, you have a comment?
Well, uh, for the clarification on the vote, is this like when we appoint a new council member where first nomination is voted on first, and it's, and then second nomination, and, and then it continues in order of majority votes? I'm sorry, in order of higher votes?
Right. And correct, what's important to realize is that when we do something like this, whoever rece- whoever receives the majority of the votes, because that happens to be the very first thing, then we don't go on to the second one to vote, because it's a moot issue at that point.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. I just wanted clarification.
So to Hugh's point, to Hugh's point, is that the method we're going to follow, the person who's nominated first, we vote on first, and so on?
As far as I'm concerned, that would be, that would be the pleasure of the council. The council's going to make that decision. So I, I, I'm probably hearing that we have two things to decide. Uh, one, how do we want to address who gets voted on first? That would be, we can discuss and decide. And the second would be is how do you want to do it? You want to do, as Katie suggested, we, we send emails to Anne, and then she reports back, and we go back and forth there. So.
Or just go raise a hand.
Or just raise hands.
There's also a record, so whatever, however the vote turns out, we're going to say what it is.
Right. And everybody's going to know who they vote for. Uh, Chris, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, we have an established process for appointing council members, a voting process that has proven to work. Um, I would move that we follow that same process.
Second.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Is it a motion we need to look at or just a general consensus?
No.
Counsel, it's your pleasure.
Yeah, I made a motion. We need a vote.
It was seconded.
Okay, you make it. Hugh seconded it. Very good. Yes, now discussion. I see Councilman Foyer raises his hand up.
Some of us haven't had the luxury of that process. Can you explain?
Sorry, Phil. Yeah, if you, yeah, it's pretty simple. Um, you, you vote on the person who was nominated first. If that person doesn't get four, then you move to the second person.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that. You see, we, we, it's been like forever since you've been around.
Owen, did, did I see, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Can we just get to the voting, please? We know how to do this, and we're just complicating things for the sake of it's, uh, 2132. All right?
Okay, then, then allow me to move forward with is that the vote would be for the first individual which was nominated, and that in this case would be Chris Kaminski. Is everybody's comfortable with that?
Are, are we emailing these votes and are we raising our hands?
Raise your hand.
Uh, they were just to raise the hands.
Raise your hand.
Raising the hands. Okay, so I would say everybody is.
Did we, did we?
Yes, Anne, go ahead.
Did we actually vote on the last motion to, um?
Uh, we did not. Thanks for catching that.
And we're doing it.
Yeah. All those, all those in favor of the motion, which is how we're going to vote, indicate, yeah, raise your hand, yes.
Yes.
Pretty much majority. Okay, great. Now, so there we are on the, the election. Would be all those in favor of Chris Kaminski being the next mayor of Liberty Lake, please indicate by showing, uh, uh, your hands. I see one, two, three, four votes, which would be Dan Dunn, Hugh Severs, Chris Kaminski, and Anne Kurtz. Annie Kurtz. That's the majority. There's no use going on to the second one. So that's where we are.
Now.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
I won't flip down.
Uh, Owen, you have your hand up?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we put on the agenda for the next meeting, uh, opening up to the public for, uh, applications for the unexpired term of, uh, Chris Kaminski.
Second.
Good point.
Very good.
We need vote.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Having settled that, we go to item 10, consent agenda. Everybody ready to move on?
Don't we have to vote on Owen's request?
We need to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike made a motion.
What's the motion?
That we put on the next agenda that we open up filings for the public to fill the unexpired term of council member Kaminski.
Correct. And who seconded that?
Was it Dan? Oh, yeah, I did.
Oh.
Sorry, my phone is blowing up. I'm trying to.
We need somebody qualified to run these meetings. Are we going to vote again?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in, all those in favor for the next meeting, uh, vote, show a hand of yes. Hope that's unanimous, looks like everybody. Very good. Now we can move to a consent agenda.
Quick, quick question.
Consent.
I apologize, I apologize if I missed this. Um, is mayor, is, um, is Chris mayor effective immediately? Does it take place tomorrow? How, when is she?
Yeah.
When is she getting sworn in?
Swearing in right now.
Yeah, yeah, we could actually have a swearing in right now.
Okay.
To do it.
Anne, are you ready? I feel for sure going to take this.
And you're awesome.
Of office.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christella Kaminski.
I, Christella Kaminski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of City of Liberty Lake Mayor.
Of the office of City of Liberty Lake Mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Congratulations, Chris.
Well, and, and just, just real quick, since I know a lot of the staff's here, I'm all, I'm actually have PTO tomorrow and Friday, so, um, I want to set up time with each one of you guys, obviously, and we'll get some balls rolling and all that stuff. So look forward to it, and thanks, everybody, for your confidence.
Well, very good. Moving, moving for, moving forward, no longer acting as interim mayor, I will go to Mayor Protem.
Okay.
For the consent agenda.
Yep. So I guess we're moving on to the consent agenda. Uh-oh, I just, okay, I thought I lost video for a second. All right, consent agenda. Does anybody want to proceed with moving our items?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, motion, like, make a motion to approve, talking about consent agenda B, to approve December 15, 2020, city council meeting minutes.
Question.
Second.
Question.
I'm trying to get my, go ahead, Owen.
Yes, in the entrance of saving time, unless somebody have, has a specific interest in any of the consent agendas, I move the consent adjec- uh, agenda A through, uh, I, unless someone else has an opinion about each item.
B through, B through I, I think, for the amendments that were made.
Thank you. B through I.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Right, another second time. Thank you. Any discussion, Phil?
Yeah, so if we have questions, can we just bring it up during the discussion phase right now?
Yes.
Perfect. I have a few. On item 10B regarding vouchers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the item number 5186, hundred and almost $12,000, or is that two police cars?
Yes, that is two police cars.
Thank you. And then the next line, 5187 for the Henry Road design for 231,709. Is that, is that a budgeted item or is that part of the additional we've been talking about?
That is, uh, part of the design process. That is a budgeted item. Um, that is also an item that is eligible for lift reimbursement.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, uh, if I can scroll down to 10H, um, the, on the real, the property voucher, it says administrative settlement of 121,984. Can you help me understand what that is? Is at the top of that, it hasn't, it hasn't 336,000, and then there's another line lower for administrative settlement?
Katie, can I, can I respond to that?
Yes, please, Lisa.
Uh, so, so, um, the, the administrative settlement is the difference between the appraised value and what the seller was willing to sell the property for. So that's, that's an adjusted amount.
Okay, that's, you gave information on the appraisal. Okay, that makes sense. Um, my other question, last question, Odin, is 10I in India, um, refers to a right of way for the Henry Road from Centennial Properties. That's a different right of way from one previous, correct?
That is correct.
Let me understand where that is.
Um, I believe that there's a map in your packet that was actually color coded, but what I will, what I will explain to you is that the, the property, the, the Centennial properties are all on the northern, the northern end, um, of the project. Um, there's a property around the proposed right of way on, or the roundabout on Mission Avenue, and there's also a stretch along the west side of Henry Road that's, that is for some storm drainage, et cetera.
That's part of the overall.
So I could offer, council member Foyer, if I could offer, so to make the roundabout robust enough to handle the size of vehicles that we're expecting from Western State as well as other developers, we need a more right of way to broaden the radius of the roundabout. Then also, as Lisa said, we need, um, construction easements for staging. And then finally, we need, um, drainage easements to get the pipe out of the area that was in the, um, contamination zone. So there's four different pieces of property that we needed from Centennial beyond what we had already acquired from them.
Separate away from Kramer Parkway.
They're all along Henry Road. I mean, they're, they're in a Rover path.
Right. Okay. That's all I have.
Uh, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one, uh, a statement first. Uh, Odin, aren't you glad you asked? We combine these all together?
Yeah, I'm thinking about rescinding.
Yeah. I want to go to, uh, I want to go to 10, 10E. Need to change that authorized mayor to sign the agreement with Splash Wick Enterprises.
Gotcha. Do we need a formal motion for that?
Probably.
Okay.
Not if it's on the consent.
Okay.
If, if it falls in consent agenda, if it falls in the consent agenda, we can just vote on it like we do all the rest of the consent items.
Perfect. I don't think that's ever come up before. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right. And hearing no other discussion, um, we will, um, vote to approve consent agenda items 10B through I. All in favor, raise your hand. So it's easier that way. One, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, there's only six. Yeah. So, yes, six out of six. Most, all, all items passed. All right, we're going to, so moving on, we don't have any public hearings, no resolutions, and we'll move on to ordinance, its first read.
Ordinance number 269A, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. This is a first read ordinance, an ordinance amending ordinance number 269 passed by the city council on December 15, 2020, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Adopting a Budget for the Period January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, Appropriating Funds and Establishing Fowler's Schedule for Established Positions."
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, we've got no, no emergency ordinances this week. Um, upcoming agenda item, Katie.
Uh, excuse me?
Yes.
Um, in discussing with Katie on this earlier, our finance director on the first ordinance we just read has requested for, to, for us to consider to suspend the ruling to allow the second red ordinance, ordinance tonight.
You guys can do what you want. I'm in no hurry. I was just, I didn't know how long this was going to go tonight.
No, I, I think since we've got the time and, and, um, it's not an emergency per, um, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council, but I, I don't see any need, and I need to learn not to jump in right away. Any other discussion? Okay. Oh, Dan?
No, uh, no additional. I think we can just take a second vote in the next, in the next meeting.
Right. Thank you. All right, Katie.
Okay, Mayor Kaminski. Um, we only have two items on the agenda for the 19th, actually three. We have a proclamation for the community risk reduction. We have a resolution to appoint the FTA, um, the board position that, that, to represent Liberty Lake. So that right now is, uh, Mayor Protem and yourself. And then finally, we have, uh, action related to your previous council position opening and moving forward with an order process. That's all we have on the agenda so far. Um, we also do not have a 6:00 PM workshop identified. So if the council is so inclined to give us some ideas on, is, do you, are you interested in having, um, an update from city staff, or are you interested in having a workshop on your priorities? That's an open question.
So workshop and priorities.
Okay. Annie?
I would like to have a workshop on one of our priorities, um, or two, depending on the topics. I mean, I think we have the things that we've started recently, term limits, that I think we could continue. Um, the other two things that I noticed on the priority list that you kind of gave us earlier were Trailhead and the library, and I think those are lingering things that, um, we're going to need to kind of start to move along on one way or the other.
Okay, so we've got term limits, revisit on that, potential Trailhead and, uh, library. Any other comments to top potential subjects for that workshop? I think those, that, that's probably too much, probably, to get into. I think, I think obviously the Trail and Library will deserve their own, um, their, their own time. So, um, if everybody's in agreement, we can talk about term limits again? Yes. Go ahead, Annie.
Um, I'm wondering if, um, during our meeting, we could have a, a workshop on the term limits, because I feel like that, I think we're closer on that one with what to do. I'm wondering if we could start with the library, since that is the longest lasting assessment that's out there that we haven't tackled. Um, and I think it's, um, it seems like it's a smaller thing than Trailhead. That's just my thought.
Any other, any, anybody opposed that?
Sounds good.
It sounds like library's on deck for workshop then. Thank you.
You.
All right, so anything else, Katie, from your side?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to citizen comments. So we invite anybody who has written out the meeting with all of us here, or anybody new, if there's citizen comments, we'll have time to take those now. Just a reminder, we've got a three-minute time limit, so if anybody would like to speak up, go ahead and send a note to the Zoom chat. I see a note from former Mayor Burkner, so please, I don't know if that means he wants to speak or not.
Yes, it does. Thank you. First and foremost, thank you to the council, and you guys will be able to get to a good decision. I appreciate you guys' thought process and thinking it through and having a good dialogue and discussion. I really want to thank all the people at Winter Glow that were involved. I didn't get a chance to do that earlier. You guys have done amazing staff, you're doing year after year, staffing that, supporting that, and it's exactly what this community is about, of getting all the people in the community involved and supportive. So I really want to thank them, and I want to thank the library board with some of your new projects. I think they're great. Or not the library board, sorry, Parkner.
All right, thank you. Do we have anybody else? Todd, do you have anybody that we might not be seeing somewhere in?
He's giving me the no.
Okay, all right, going once.
Hello.
Hello.
This is Mayor, former Mayor Peterson, and I wanted to welcome Chris Kaminski to the club.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And I see you covered up your screen. It would have been nice to see you join us in person there.
We're getting old.
Aren't we all, aren't we all? All right, guys, thanks for all the participation tonight. If there's nothing else that anybody wants to bring up, I move to adjourn. Right, we'll see everybody in two weeks. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, Katie, can you give me a call when we're done here on my cell?
Yeah.
Thank you. Talk about tomorrow. Bye, guys.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.